Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wednesday, July 13th, 2022 Franklin Board of Education meeting. The meeting has been properly posted. We have a roll call, please.
Sure. Dr. Khan?
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Here.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Here.
Mrs. Whitkowski?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Mrs. Larson is excused, and I am here.
Thank you. Can we stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. A few housekeeping things. Welcome to several people who are new tonight. Mrs. Benin, Mrs. Annalee Benin, welcome. New district administrator, Mr. Andy Cromie.
Thank you.
Welcome. New business assistant superintendent, Bob Blessington. Mr. Blessington, welcome. New curriculum director. Also welcome, Jenna Rosensky is the new principal at Forest Park Middle School, and Claire Bastian, welcome. She is the new assistant principal at the high school. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Community comment. Participants under this agenda item must be residents of the Franklin Public School District or parents/guardians of Franklin Public School students, must state for their record their full name and address, and must limit their statements to three minutes with a maximum of 15 minutes for any and all comments. I do have several people that wish to comment tonight, so I will stick pretty strictly with three minutes, and we'll hope to get everybody in. And if we're very close, we'll look to see if we can go a little bit over. If community comment is related to an agenda item, the board may respond to that comment either at the end of the community comment session or during the discussion of that agenda item. The board may not discuss a comment or question that does not relate to an agenda item per Board Policy Administrative Rules 8300. Tyler Podol, please.
Last one in the basket, first to speak.
Just.
Do I sit? Is it my first board member?
Please.
Okay, great. So I'm Tyler Podol. I'm a two-year community member but eight-year employee with Franklin Public Schools. I'm the boys' basketball coach. Over the past eight years, I've been lucky enough to work with 1,000 families that have come through our particular school district, working just this summer, we had over 200 camp members. And I'm here to speak about, I would classify it as a priority in our school district in creating facility space for our high school and also elementary school and just all of our athletes at different tiers, our community recreation program. Just over the last couple years, the community has changed. It's grown. It's gotten bigger. We can't house our feeder programs. We can't, we have the inability to schedule practices without colliding, and I know our scheduler is mightily overwhelmed. And just even this summer, putting our youth programs all together in one spot, many were told that 24 hours was going to be an opportunity for our kids, and unfortunately, they were only able to book 12 in 14 hours. Now, we do have middle school athletics, but our feeder programs is what drives our high school programs to success, and it's a great way to show continuity between all of our high school programs. I guess where I'm going with this is that it's not just the boys' basketball program or the wrestling program. It's a facility issue for all of our programs. Our girls' basketball team, their freshman JV don't practice in the high school. They practice at Ben Franklin all season long. When I look at facilities across the state, there are 71 Division I schools, which is 1,200 or more enrollment. There's only nine schools that don't have a fieldhouse, which I classify three gyms or more. Tosi East, six Milwaukee Public Schools, and two Madison Metropolitan Schools. We are the only suburban-based school that doesn't have a fieldhouse out of 71 schools. Our weight room is 30% the size of DePere. And we have tried to do our best with what we have, and as being a community member, and now as well as being an employee and a coach, I really think there could be value such as like South Milwaukee that makes it, since we are such a recreation-based concept of our district and how they tier certain organizations to who gets facility use, but every single calendar, every single facility is booked from now until February, starting in September, that youth programs can't even, they can't book unless somebody cancels. So there's my time. But I would suggest, if we were going to do a recreation-based and look at getting a facility, it could be a great adventure between the community, the rec department, just like South Milwaukee, or the Kern Center at MSOE, how they use a facility like that. That's my time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Louis Brown, please.
Louis Brown, 5535 West Allwood Drive. Thanks for allowing me to speak. Most of you know who I am. For the new people, I'm the head football coach. I live in Franklin. I've taught in Franklin, and I've coached in Franklin for 30 years. My two sons graduated from Franklin. One's a math teacher, and the other one's an engineer major in Madison. I'm not here to complain, because I have never done that in front of the school board in my past 30 years. I'm here to make you aware of what I'm seeing in the trenches. I'm in the trenches at the high school. I'm in the FIAD department. I think transparency has been an issue, and improving this would really be what's best for our kids in our district. Like to start out with a story of our last day of school. Two key teachers that taught my own kids, I knew were leaving the district for other districts, one after 17 years and one after 13 years. Both are favorite teachers of my own kids, not because they liked them, but because they challenged them. As a senior member of staff of the high school, and having the respect I have for these two, I took them flowers during my prep the last day. They both had prep as well, and they were sitting in a dark room together, teary-eyed about leaving. These teachers put their heart and soul into this district, and they go into other districts because we can't figure out how to retain our best. I just listened to them and wished them well. Yes, they're going to be replaced, but they did not want to leave. We will replace them with a young teacher and help train them to be great, and then hopefully they don't leave in four years and take their skills that they develop in Franklin and go to another district because they don't feel valued or they don't get compensated as well as maybe some of the other districts do. Is that really what's best for kids? I heard 16% of our teachers are leaving. In six years, we would have a whole new staff. Again, we are all in this together, and that's what's best for kids. I realize not everyone gets everything they want, but our board and administration should at least be receptive to suggestions when a well-respected member like myself reaches out. The example I use is when I invited the board for a tour of our athletic facilities, which are not very good indoors, and only one showed up. She's not here tonight. Two replied that they couldn't make it. If a parent or student of mine ever reached out, I would at least respond. To me, that's not being in this together. I feel like I'm at a point where I need to say what needs to be said. You know, most of the actions that happen the next few years are probably not going to affect me. I get it, I'm on my way out. But if I, you know, if I feel like we all need to be in this together, then I feel like I have to say something. I'm at that point in my career. Now, being the head football coach, I want to tell you why our football program has a lot of success, and I'm really hoping our district can kind of take this approach. It's not about money, but basically, can I go another like 30 seconds? Okay? We have an "all in this together" approach. I go to every Gridiron Club, thank them for everything they do each month. We raise $70,000 or $70,000 every year that goes back into our program. I'm very receptive to suggestions from assistant coaches and players, and reach out to the AD when necessary. He's super supportive. All of our coaches are appreciated, and everyone feels valued, not just on an email, a text, but face-to-face. When someone reaches out with an issue, I always respond, no matter what. Our coaches and players care about each other because we are all in this together. We hug, we say we love each other, and we care about each other. We win together, and when we lose, we look at what went wrong and we fix it. With all the shortcomings facility and compensation-wise for coaches that we have in our district, I just think, you know, I've only had one coach leave in 11 years, our program, and he left because his sons play for another program that's in disarray. Otherwise, every coach I've ever had, none of them have ever left to coach somewhere else, because this is how we do it. We do it together, and I just think we have to make sure that that happens in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Yank, please.
Read from my phone like the cool kids do. My name's Mary Yank. My address is 5731 West Cascade Drive in Franklin. As a member of the Franklin Educational Foundation, it was my recent privilege and pleasure to read a few of the 48 nominations for educator scholarships awarded by the foundation every year. This number is almost as many as last year. I think we had 49 last year, and they were submitted by colleagues, parents, and students. These submissions were heartfelt, deeply moving, and many went on at some length describing the positive impact an educator had on a student's learning, emotional well-being, and growth as a person. Others spoke about a cherished, dedicated, innovative coworker who inspired their students every day inside and outside the classroom. So after hearing that two more principals in the district have submitted their resignations and becoming aware of the continued departures of gifted, valuable educators to other districts or careers, I felt the need to speak at a board meeting, to ask what I can do as a parent, to ask what the district in general and the board in particular will be doing to retain these outstanding instructors, aides, and ancillary staff. At a couple of previous board meetings, I know several educational assistants spoke about their compensation not reflecting their hard work and value to the schools and the students. I am adding my voice to theirs and asking that the salary structure, opportunities for pay increases, a predictable system for salary advancement, as well as a resumption of the Salary Review Committee that was implemented a couple of years ago be resurrected. Other districts in this vicinity compensate their educators substantially more than Franklin does, and while a competitive salary and benefits structure certainly is only one component of job satisfaction and retention, it is obviously a crucial one. Teacher turnover in this district is approaching 16%. I am hard-pressed to think that a district that has the tax base Franklin does, does not have the funds to more generously compensate educators, assistants, and other staff. Thank you.
Andrew Mazorski, please.
Thank you. I'm Andy Mazorski. I'm a teacher here in the district. I teach at the high school, special education teacher. I'll be entering my 26th year of teaching for Franklin Public Schools. And I'm here today, I guess, to vent some frustration a little bit and just talk about concern. Much of what we've heard from the previous two speakers, there's a lot of people out there that are hurting, and, you know, they're making choices around looking for employment in other districts. And, you know, I want to ask you all to think about the impact of every decision you're making. I am a school board member in my community. I make the same difficult decisions that you all do, but some of the decisions around compensation in Franklin are really creating, you know, a negative impact on students here. Here I am, I just got an email from Laura the other day talking about what I can expect for an increase in pay for this year, and it was $1,500, you know, a little more than 1.5%. Last year, 1.1%. The year before, 0.9%. Three straight years of not even remotely close to an inflationary pay increase. I don't know how, you know, how much of that I can take. You know, I feel like I've been in a boxing match, and I just keep getting punched down, you know, punched to the floor, and one of these days, I'm not going to be able to get back up. You know, I come to you as an experienced veteran teacher. These decisions around salary, you know, really seem to be punitive to the teachers and staff that have been here the longest and the most dedicated and the most loyal to the district. And, you know, we're here holding the pieces together because we're seeing just crazy amounts of turnover amongst our younger teachers. In my department, just at the high school, and in the Spanish department, just at the high school, in the last two years, 13 teachers have left Franklin Public Schools. That's not a winning formula, and it really does have to do with compensation. There's a connection to that compensation piece with our coherence plan, right? One of the big items in the coherence plan is employee engagement. We are not anywhere near at a level of employee engagement and having, you know, the right type of culture in the workplace where you're going to be able to sustain and make those, you know, things happen for the kids that we want. We want to grow our statistics, right? And we're not getting there, you know, because there's a disconnect. You can't treat teachers and staff, give them, you know, say, "Thank you for your service for 25, 30 years. We're going to give you 1%." How are those people going to, you know, and this is year after year after year, how are they going to come to work feeling engaged, feeling like, "This is great stuff. I'm going to do my best. My, you know, performance will, you know, will be impacted greatly." You know, I'm on a building leadership team, and there's a reason for that. I have a lot of value that I bring to our building. I'm highly educated. I have more post-secondary credits that, well beyond a doctoral degree, and yet I feel like I'm the one who, you know, is just, I don't know how to describe the feeling other than just trampled on, you know. I have four pieces of clothing on today. Three of the four, I bought at Goodwill. One of these days, I would love to just buy something off the rack. I can't do it. You know, I have a family. I've got kids in college. I have expenses too, you know, and they're big. They're big expenses. We've all seen it. The small, little increase in pay that's being offered to us, that will not even cover the gas that it costs to come to work over the course of this next year. So think about all the other inflationary increases, you know, that have gone on in your life, and you're feeling the pinch too, just as we are. You know, I really, I know you've made a decision, I think. I know those decisions can be revisited, and I would ask you to revisit the compensation decision that you have made for the good of the students in this community and the families, and really trying to build something, rebuild something here in Franklin, because it's been unraveling for quite a while, and somehow, we've got to stop this. We really have to stop this. Thank you for giving me your time.
Thank you. Mary Carol Lewich, please.
I'm going to leave my time. I think everything that you've heard is what I would say as well. I do appreciate the fact that you reconsidered your original offer. However, I still feel that, as Angie said, it can be revisited at some point. And I would like to say that I hope the board is listening, because I don't see this district as the same level of student achievement as it once was. And the staff leaving only hurts us. We need to stem the turnover. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Carol Lewich, please.
My name's Mike Carol Lewich, 8208 West College Drive. I am an educator, but I'm not an educator in the public school system. I'm an educator in a private school. And one of the things that I want to bring to everybody's attention today is the fact that there are a lot of people that are making choices to take their kids to places where they know that they're going to get a full education. I hear my wife come home and talk about how there are issues in the school where kids are, because of the focus of the curriculum, a lot of the time is being spent on key subjects but at the expense of others. I would like to see kids have a lot of opportunity to develop themselves if they're an artist or if they're a musician. And they get that opportunity in the private school that I teach. And I don't, I keep hearing about how there's more and more time that is being spent in places where we're not really looking at what the strengths of the individual student are. We're so focused on making sure that they get their 90 minutes of math and their 90 minutes of English, and then we kind of script them around to the other subjects like they're not that important. Well, what happens to a child who has that as a skill? Wouldn't it be wonderful if you're educating kids so that if they have that way of learning and that way of developing and those types of talents, that we could take that forward? I just happened to hear a commercial on public radio today for the Kettle Moraine School District where they're developing a whole school just for the arts. And understanding the financial situation that this district is in, I think there's lots of opportunities to do a lot more in this district. One more thing that I wanted to say is that I do want to congratulate the district on the job that it has done in educating our students. When I look at the report cards for 2020, 2021, Franklin School District comes out very, very well. But one of the things that we don't do as well as we could do is we don't celebrate very well. I can go out to other districts' websites, and I can look at the types of things that they put together for district newsletters and whatever. It's fantastic. 20 pages of pictures of what's going on in the classrooms in other schools, and I think that there's a big opportunity to showcase the wonderful job that's going on in the school district beyond what we're doing right now.
Thank you. There's one more speaker. Does everybody?
That's fine.
Paula Dryer, please.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. The 2022-2023 school year will be my 32nd year in Franklin, and I love coming to work every day. I love my students. I love what they do. I couldn't imagine doing anything else. I have a chronic liver disease, and over the last 15 years, we've seen our insurance rates increase, and I'm paying much more to maintain my health than I ever used to. The last two years, I agreed to take less of the salary increase to retain our younger staff, hoping that it would be made up to me. Now, it's a little larger this year at $1,500, but with inflation being what it's being, I'll probably lose about $3,300 in the next year. I realize that as a 32-year veteran teacher, I make more money than many of my colleagues, but I also have a master's degree, spent $13,000 to $15,000 getting that master's degree, and have stayed loyal to this, what used to be once a destination district. Interestingly enough, many of my colleagues who received the 3% and the 3.5% that I gave up some of my salary for, they're no longer even here. They've left the district. So that's frustrating for me, and it makes me feel like I am not valued. Retention is a problem. As many people have said, 16% have already left from this year, and not only due to salaries, that's an important component, but also low morale, I've never seen it quite so low, and our working conditions. We've lost dozens of excellent teachers. And the Spanish department, as Mr. Mazorski just said, I am for the second year in a row, starting all over with brand-new teachers. We hired three new teachers last year. None of them were renewed. So I have three brand-new teachers, hopefully a fourth signing on soon for our Spanish One job, so we don't have to offer it online. And basically, I don't have a prep, because these new teachers come to me to learn what they need to learn. What did we receive two years ago? One teacher taught 13 classes, another 10, and I taught eight. Didn't have a prep. Prep during my lunch, inhaled my lunch, sometimes skipped a lunch. So please meet with us so we can reach an agreement on providing better working conditions and a more fair salary schedule. Thank you very much.
All right. Item five, consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, school board announcements. Any announcements by school board members? School board calendar. Annual meeting of the electors, Wednesday, August 17th, 2022, at the ECC at 6:00, and then followed by a regular Board of Education meeting on the same day at 7:00, also here at the ECC, or as soon as the first meeting ends. Regular Board of Education meeting, Wednesday, September 14th, 2022, at the ECC. Item eight, district administrator update. Update from the district administrator, please, Mrs. Benin.
All right. Thank you. So just a couple of updates. July is, you know, busy preparing for the school year, but a little slower as we don't get to see the smiling faces of the students as much. But with excitement, we have our summer learning program, which does wrap up next week, Thursday. Our numbers are up considerably this year from last year, which is really exciting to report. So we have 400 elementary students participating, 182 middle-level students, and in our high school, 220 students, which is a combination of credit recovery and a good amount of students taking enrichment courses. Exciting adventure at the end of camp or the end of learning program, I should say. Next Thursday, the middle school band will be holding a little concert behind the middle school at 9:00 AM, so if you want to come over and see them perform and everything they've been working on this summer, it would be great to have people there. You might want to bring a chair. It will be outside on the grassy area behind the building. Another thing to look forward to is we turn the calendar into August. We will start our online registration process. So right now, we are putting together our communication plans and getting everything posted on our website, communicated to parents, so that that's a smooth process. It resembles a lot of what it looked like last year, being online, less of the in-person piece that we're used to from years past. And finally, I think we're really just looking forward to not getting past July and summer ending, but also moving into August, and a lot of our sporting events, our band camps, and a lot of the other activities for students start to gear up, and we get to see them coming into the district again as we get ready for the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Reports, presentations, and other school board business. Coherence plan. End of your report. Dr. Mo, please.
Thank you. One second. There we go. Thank you. Just a reminder that this agenda item was originally for our
Just a reminder that this agenda item was originally for our June meeting, so thank you in advance. I could not be here in June for letting us move this to July meeting. So these slides, like we've done with other updates, will go through what you received in your packet on Friday. So it's a little bit more detailed. If it's hard to see up on the monitors, the colored screenshots are the same thing in your packet, so you can follow along. Just a reminder that our coherence plan, the top two sections will not, actually, the top three sections here will not change. So this is what we are working towards for the next three years. We'll be moving into year two next year. The only thing that will change that we'll talk about at the end are our tactics, or the smaller buckets of action items. So nothing has changed here. First area that we report out on each time, so last time you heard from me was in mid-year. Now we're at end of year, would be student achievement and growth. If you remember, all of these data points come in at different times throughout the year. So you'll see in the prior years column where there's a gold highlight, that's where there's new data. So that helps you know. So we do have new scores in around MAPS growth, and we do have new score in for student engagement survey. That's why you'll see those highlighted in gold, I guess. It doesn't come through real good on the presentation, but in gold. We did not see a whole lot of change in MAP growth, so, and I know, Dr. Beer, you asked this question too. There's different ways you can use MAP scores. You can think about MAPs as an achievement percentile. So like when you go, you take your kids to the pediatrician, and they, you say they're at the 87th percentile for height and the 50th percentile for weight. When we talk about growth for MAPs, it's the same thing. There's a huge bucket of kids that takes the MAPs test across the whole nation, and they take and they rank those scores from top to bottom and make percentiles. What we're talking about and how this metric was written for growth. So this is tracking how many students in K8 were considered high growth, which means they're making more than 50% of their projected growth in a year. So that could be a kid going from the 1 percentile on up, or the kid going from the 80th percentile on up. So it's a growth measure, not an achievement measure, just so that makes sense, and I can answer questions if you do. So this passed in spring, so fall to spring, we had 45% of students K through 8 make or be considered high growth in reading, which moved us, we were at 42%. So we went up last year at this time. We went up to 45% of students. And then for that same measure in math, we went down just slightly last year at this time, 56% of students K8 were in that high-growth category. We went down to 55 in that category. So not a whole lot of change. That's miniscule when you're talking about lots of kids. But obviously, we always want to go up, and the math did drop a little bit.
Do you have any thoughts as to the difference in math and literacy scores for this, ostensibly the same group of students?
I don't. I mean, I have a lot of thoughts. If I could figure it out, I would have did it on my first week on the job. So some people talk about, we've had discussions, the one difference that I can say is I think MAPs is a little, math is a little bit more straightforward, so people can take the skills and isolate them. So a big kind of stereotypical thing you used to hear is, kids don't do well on standardized tests because we teach geometry too late in the year, when you hear people talk. And so we're going to teach geometry sooner. People seem more comfortable with slotting that around. The only thought that I've had around literacy and trying to figure it out is, when we took, when the pandemic happened and we basically had to take what happened in the classroom and moved it to virtual, math is a little bit more straightforward to make that move. It was a little bit easier, I think, to take that work and move it into a virtual setting and have kids be able to function fairly the same. The workshop model for reading or English Language Arts, and this is just me inferring, I don't have data. I think in reflection was a little bit more difficult just to take and pick up and move into virtual. Kids are supposed to be sitting next to each other and having conversations and seeing lots of books on the shelves and pulling from them and using sticky notes. Not that ELA and reading and math wasn't happening, but to pick that up with 12 hours' notice and plop it into virtual, in my mind, was likely harder. So that's about the, the only, I guess I could say, thought about why reading and math would be different. But good or bad, the movement from 42 to 45, or 56 to 55, is pretty small when you're considering a large group of students. But does that help? And that is, that's just me trying to be reflective about why it would be different.
The other question I would have is that, I mean, the overall growth, though, overall, the goal is to, is much higher than that. I mean, you have those reds and yellows. Am I reading that correct?
You are. So we would hope to move into the green, that 53% of students would be in high growth, and right now, only 45% of them are.
Is there any value, and I asked you this in an email, in looking at just achievement versus growth? What are your thoughts on that?
Value, yes. The one thing that you'll see is, is at the higher, they're called RIT scores. So that's when you get your score on MAPs. When you're at a low percentile, you have a lot to learn, and growth can look very fast. When you're at a higher percentile, not that you're not learning, but there's less higher-level skills, so the growth looks slower. So the difference between growth and an achievement that way, I think matters. The other thing that matters is philosophically, if we have a kid go from the first percentile to the 26th percentile, to me, that's a really good teaching that we want to recognize versus maybe a kid that goes from the 95th to 97th. Equally, right? And that's just a preference. I guess if I were to redo this document in the next coherence plan, I would like to track both.
Yeah.
So MAPs would, NWEA or MAP would say that students who are at the 70th percentile or above, if they can hold at the 70th percentile, or remember, that's being compared to the whole nation, if they can hold there, the odds will be that they will have no post-secondary doors closed to them. So for whatever the mathematicians have done, that 70th percentile equates to a 22 on the ACT, which is considered kind of the gatekeeper to two-year, four-year, you know, whatever. And I guess if we're thinking about profile of a graduate, I would say that we would want every kid to be able to leave us to make any choice at any door that they wanted. So there's some, I think, benefit into thinking, okay, let's boost five more kids over that 70%, or 10 more kids, or however we do it.
Thank you.
Dr. Mo, what do you think about, so, looking at the ACT SPAR with math, you know, current hour is 47%. And of course, we want to go to 65. Looking at least from the year from 2017 to 2021, it has kind of seems to be decreasing. Of course, we know that pandemic might have played a role, but what different will be doing to make sure that we come back and go towards a target rather than keep decreasing down?
So we're going to have to look at this metric a year from now, because this past year was the last year with ASPIRE. So that assessment will be replaced, which will be likely the pre-ACT. All right. We've talked a lot about this during this past year. There's two kind of schools of thought. Do you just do better at tier one for everybody? Right? That would be the easy way. Or has the pandemic created a situation where we need to backfill some skills? There's always that argument, if this is a nationally-normed test, or even a state-norm test, that everybody went through the pandemic in some fashion, how are those norms going to settle out? I don't have that answer quite yet. I think everybody's asking that. So it, why should Franklin perform more bad than a student in New Hampshire who also went through the pandemic, right? In, in simple terms. We've talked about, I think what we settled on with the high school staff is that they would do some repurposing of the time during Gold Block, that we're going to switch the test administration to pre-ACT, to be an online format. Right now, believe it or not, it's still paper and pencil, so it's very hard to get to the data and sort kids for lack, and know who needs what. So move to an online administration format, which is not that expensive, and then have teachers using that homeroom format, or Gold Block, or advisory, what we call it, to be able to manage that data with those kids like they do now, and work as a math teacher group in pre-calc, or IM2, or IM1, to work to fill those gaps. As you see, if you're all students in my class, maybe you all have this theme of being low in algebra. I'm just making that up. So I'm going to be sure when I do sample problems or whatever else, I'm going to hit on that algebra, because I know I have five of you sitting in front of me. We'll see. ASPIRE is not always predictive of ACT, which seems like, why would you have different tests? I mean, everything's generally predictive, but they're not as closely correlated as pre-ACT, and ACT may end up being, we're hoping.
So do you, do you feel that with pre-ACT coming in, we will be able to better, have better scores with the current curriculum which we have? Or do you think we need to still take ASPIRE data into consideration and take pre-ACT administration and go towards the goal?
Mm-hmm. I guess ask me a year from now. I just don't know. I struggle, and I think everybody struggles with, what is pandemic and what is something specific we're doing or not doing here in Franklin? I don't have the answer to that, except we have to assume at some point in time, the pandemic is out of our control. We have to take the data where we're at and rebuild it. So in terms of that, I don't know about ASPIRE scores or pre-ACT scores will be better, but we'll be better at knowing what the data says so that we can plan for it. Right now, you give the test and you're not getting scores, and it's a paper pencil thing till months and months and months later. It's not very useful for me to look at my math class and figure out how to intervene.
One of the things which kind of I have always thought is that, as you said, average 22 ACT score gets the students, you know, step into the colleges. But we need to be cognizant that Franklin is a, you know, affluent community. Looking at the state-wise, and most of our families, you know, if they want to get scholarships, they need to have way higher ACT scores. So I understand and appreciate the 22 score, but because this is affluent community and not Milwaukee County, you know, Milwaukee's, so our students have to have, you know, better ACT scores to achieve the academic scholarships, which they, most of them qualify. They don't qualify most of them. Apps are, you know, other scholarships. So I think we need to take into consideration, that's one point which I want to make note of, so shooting for the higher. You know, 22 is the average. Yes, it opens the door, but that's not sufficient for our students to help with the scholarships as a. Second part, which I want to make emphasis is that, as you all know, the ACT has English reading, math, and science. And historically, students have been, who have been able to achieve 35, 36 in the ACTs, they've always, are even above 30s, they've been able to achieve that because of getting 35, 36 on English and reading. So at least I have been told that getting a 36 on math itself is difficult, but getting a 35, 36 on English and reading is fairly feasible. So maybe we have to have a strategy where we put some strategy in mind and thinking of how, okay, if we are able to get with limited resources, even a little bit more help, you know, more results, you know, on the ACT aspect, then maybe we must take into that consideration.
Thank you. And I know you've brought up before adding some of those ACT prep-type courses when we spoke about the enrichment courses in the high school. That is one of them. Not that that's going to solve all our problems overnight, but actually, there was an individual that came and spoke here at the board earlier in the fall about college essay writing classes and ACT prep and all of that. And Ms. Sunstrom reached out to that individual, and she helped get us hooked up for summer school. So that ended up being a start, anyway.
Thank you.
Any other questions? The only other new data that I wanted to note is at the bottom, that student engagement survey. If you remember, our survey format has moved to, once a year, they get the full survey, and then shorter pulse surveys during the year to monitor specific things. So this reflects the full survey that was given at the end of the year, not the pulse survey. And that went down 81 to 78. Historically, across the board, the thing that the students rank lowest is they see themselves as always being a good friend and nice to people, but they don't always rank others being nice to people, K-12 across the board, which is always interesting. So the questions that get at, how do I treat people? How do I feel are usually higher than how I view all of you treating each other, which is always an interesting phenomenon. The one thing I think I shared with you last time that I feel really good about from an affective piece is that we've always, so when you answer that student survey, if you answer very low, not feeling a sense of belonging, or not feeling people care about you, it triggers a text box, so to speak, where you can write comments. So we've always monitored those comments at 6th through 12th grade. Student Services does that to make sure we're intervening with kids who need intervention. We added that. I know I spoke about this before at the elementary. So if they, there's our smiley faces and sad faces. They helped. But if they do sad faces, or rate low, they also had that same opportunity. And we set the system to generate a list directly to the principal so they, they could check into each one of those students. So I know it doesn't reflect in the data, but I think from the feels-like quotient standpoint, that made us feel like this data mattered more. We did not have huge lists of kids, usually 10 or less at a school. Most kids said, well, I don't know, I just answered that. But we have uncovered a couple of kids who were really struggling, marked that, and we could get them hooked up for support. So that was good. Some district actions since last time we talked. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So with our coherence plans are better placed to, you know, learn, how frequent are you doing the pulse survey for the student engagement? And do they have an opportunity to give input about what they feel from their lens about the learning process?
As a follow-up to how they answered the survey?
No. For example, because if you want to engage the students.
Right.
You mentioned, other than the annual, when they also have a pulse survey.
Yes.
How frequent are you the pulse survey?
Two additional times during the year.
And at what times do they happen?
This year was October. It might have been the first week in November and March.
Do they have an avenue in that pulse survey where they can get engaged? If, example, and this kind of, being the devil's advocate, our scenario is that student starts a class and sees that, hey, you know, I'm not able to grab the material, for example, you know, of this subject, and approaches the teacher, you know, for example, and then still not able to understand the material and not able to improve the grades. What are the avenues from engagement survey? Because we can't expect the teacher, the student to come to the principal and talk about, hey, you know, I'm having these challenges with this, because students are shy, and I don't think most of the students will ever come up to this principal and talk about a teacher, you know. So to engage the students, to make sure that if they're having a challenge to understanding a material, or the methodology, or whatever it is, you know, how do we improve that using the engagement survey? And I'm as fashion, at the same time, be able to kind of, you know, giving them a platform that, hey, you know, you have this, first of all, giving the information that, hey, you have these problems, this is the tool which you can use. Because as you said, you know, if the students are not filling the survey, am I right? You know, then the survey is only good if people fill it. So making sure that the students utilize the survey, that's first point. Second point is that, that, for example, at jobs, when we do the surveys, it always reminded to us that this is confidential. You will have zero repercussions, you know, of that. So some kind of enforcing to the students that if you want them to engage, they have to have the sense of confidence that what I'm going to type right now about my X, Y, and Z instructor, teacher, methodology, I'm not going to penalize with that.
So you're right. It is anonymous. The only time names come up is if the child selects that I, and the phrasing is, I would like an adult to check in with me. So kind of like I am in crisis. So those are the names. Otherwise, it's anonymous. What we've done historically is teachers can access the data down to the classroom level. So if I'm a fifth-grade teacher, I would see general themes about how my class answered. So my teacher greets me by name. Let's say that's in there. So the teacher would know how her particular or his particular class rated, and they've followed up with focus groups. So like in those, hey, I see that only 50% of you say that you feel greeted by name. How could we address that? But it is not down to the individual. You know, I don't think the survey is a tool where a student could say, I'm not understanding the way my teacher teaches math. I want some help. That it's more of social-emotional crises that they can ask for help than it would be academic. There would be nothing stopping them from saying that, but I would not say the comments that we've gotten up until this point have been academic in nature. They've been more social-emotional anxiety or sense of They've been more social emotional anxiety or sense of belonging or we've had some suicidal type thoughts at the high school. More in that realm than academic.
So what platform do the students have for the academic engagement?
They would have to talk through their teacher, talk through parent-teacher conferences, not through the survey.
Is it possible that we, because you know, of course, the parent teachers are there, you know, the parent teacher conference is there. But if it's confidential and if the students can utilize that. What's?
But if the goal is to help an individual student with struggling with their work, how would a confidential survey accomplish that? Or is the goal to identify teachers that are not doing well? Is that what you're saying?
So yeah, so basically, you know, because the students need to have platforms to express their concerns. If a student is struggling with X, Y and Z, they're going to talk to the parent. The parent can approach the principal and all that stuff, you know, and, but they themselves must be able to kind of, you know, okay, if I have this one, you know, I approach this one and be able to bring it to the attention to whoever's reading the survey. Okay, now, hey, you know, I, for example, the minister is seeing that here on the survey, I saw ten students are talking about this specific issues, you know, maybe there is an issue there, you know, to kind of address this instructor method or something like that. So I think the more tools we have for the students, because then the road we are serving the students, I believe that it will only empower us in, you know, in serving the students as such.
I think we've also talked before about deciding the, the perfect amount of surveys to fill out. I mean, there, there's not a, at, at some point, at some point, people just disregard them if there's too many. I, I think there are, I, I, I think we're going to have to decide at some point, but I think there are, it seems like we've fought to get to the right amount of surveys. Maybe we're there, maybe we're not, but I don't think it's considerably different than what it is. And I, I do think we have considerable amount of tools. I also don't, the confidentiality piece seems to me to be not, not that much of an issue. I hear people say, I don't want repercussions because of confidentiality, but I don't ever hear any examples in this district, or I haven't heard them certainly recently, about, about repercussions coming down. I mean, but maybe it happens, but I don't, I don't think.
No, no, I'm, I'm.
My, my opinion is confidentiality.
I'm not suggesting that there are repercussions for kind of raising your concerns as such. What I'm suggesting is that if we have, even this pulse survey twice a year, you know, other than the emotional, you know, uh, uh, atmosphere, it can also be used at the same time. If you have, for example, if you have one question, if you have any concerns regarding the methodology or difficulty in learning, you know, at least, you know.
It sounds like you have a, you're identifying an area of concern that isn't addressed on the survey and perhaps isn't best addressed on the survey. But it sounds like it's something that you should probably have a further conversation with Dr. Mo about to sort of hash out your specific areas of concern. Because they sound like they fall outside of the area of what this survey is. Wouldn't, I, and I hear what you're saying, you're, you're identifying more about didactics and, and that type of a thing. Is that right?
Yeah, because my, my goal is that to give the students each and every resources and platform and avenues to kind of, you know, if they, if they have been able to go and talk to the teacher, which some students do, if they have been able to go and talk to the parents, you know, or if they have anonymous survey to kind of, you know, talk about the challenges.
It would be interesting to know how helpful that would actually be. Can I ask one more question about the chart before you move on? Are, are, are you going to go into employee engagement or separately? Okay, never mind. Pin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So closing gaps, there was no new data to report. So this is based on forward. Forward scores have been released, but they are embargoed. So we will be able to update that in fall, I hope. We just sent out ASPIRE scores today, so had this meeting been a week later, we could have added that data in. They just went out this morning. So we're getting more data. We should have more closing gap data when that comes. So nothing new here. Thus, you don't see anything highlighted in gold in that prior year's column. It's the same data you saw last time. Since this, the last time we met, so mid-year, we have done a lot of work to kind of re-envision our coaching model and support from system specialists. So one change that you will see and I'll mention later in the presentation is each system specialist is going to be assigned to be a participant on building school improvement teams. So they're not building-based individuals, but they're going to participate with one particular school in pairs. So I think there was a little bit of disconnect maybe between the coaching work and school improvement plans, right? This is a way to get them connected to that. We also talked about for tactics for next year, we did a lot of root cause work with the leadership team, building that into school improvement teams. So that's kind of the next step down. How do school improvement teams take that and use that? The other addition that Ms. Cody will be leading is transition improvement grant at the high school, which deals with raising graduation rates for students with IEPs. So that's another gap measure that we track as a part of that college and career readiness. Go ahead.
This is something that came up when I met with Mr. Blessington, and I just might as well mention it while it's up here on the board. As a board member, I know I am unclear sometimes on all the roles of the different system specialists and interventionists. So I would love at some point to receive a bit more information about what those people do. Yes, that is all.
Fair to include in the fall update, but, which is kind of the, by the organic way we've grown this. You asked questions that I included in the next update. Is that a fair way to?
I think it is.
To do that?
Thank you.
Okay. Employee engagement. So we did give, again, we do the full survey once a year with the pulse survey. So we kind of moved to that model when, rather than giving that full survey multiple times a year. So we did give the employee engagement in June after school let out of last year, but June, the first week in June this year. So it was given earlier before school let out. We did drop from seventy-nine percent down to seventy-one percent. The staff retention rate has not been updated yet, which is why you only see the highlight in there.
That was my question, because what we are seeing here isn't what we've, and I don't know, I don't know if you care to comment on the sixteen percent number we heard in presentations or community comment?
Yeah, in, in reference to that, we are still evaluating our data because we're still working through our staffing. So we are not finalized for the next school year. So I'm not necessarily, I don't have finalized numbers from that perspective in terms of who would be leaving or who would be coming into the district, who is staying, all of that. That's something that I report to the board once we're a little bit more finalized in October. In terms of the retention, I can also provide that in October as well. It'll be a little bit more clear.
Regarding the staff set or employees engagement survey data though, that having gone down, do you, is there any way to correlate that with our student engagement? If we have staff that's feeling less engaged, is it any surprise that we have students who are feeling less engaged? Or is there any crossover there?
I think that's something that we can certainly explore. I don't know if the questions are necessarily similar enough to make direct comparisons, but I think it's, we can review the data.
I don't think it's foolish to think that if one goes down the other. I mean, I think you're spot on if your whole system isn't. Teachers are the main factor and how well kids do. I mean, we all know how that works. Happy teachers are happy kids. So I would agree that there's a connection. I can't disagree with that.
The other side of that question then is, you know, flipping that around, how, you know, what, what systems are in place or what plans are in place or whatever to hopefully try to in, increase that employee engagement. If that we think would probably also help with that student engagement. Are there any, is it too soon to say what those?
So I, I can tell you what we did at the end of this year and then what we intend to do for next year as a start. So I know, you know, we do rounding, which are one-to-one conversations between supervisor and employee. So principals round with teachers. This year, the principals specifically got to add questions. So rounding, capital R, is usually a very strategic set of questions. It comes from Studer Group, which now hasn't hurt here on, I think they are now, but it's a, it's a set, set of questions. We had principals this year add questions based on their lowest scoring survey item. So this balance of quantitative, when people answer, agree or strongly disagree on that survey, and then, okay, we rated low, I feel my work is connected to the coherence plan. I'm just making that up. So then teachers would have a one-to-one follow-up conversation with their employees about why do you think that that was rated low? Or why did you rate that low? And then Laura and I had meetings with each principal to synthesize that data that they gathered. So that was a new piece. It used to be that we did some stop right reports. And I don't necessarily think what principals were hearing from teachers was ever connected, like the, the survey and the rounding were maybe not always connected as intentionally as I think they could be. So that was a change that they are intentionally connected. The other thing that we have always done in some format, but exit interviews. So there's an online form that you can fill out and also teachers had the, or staff, all staff, not just teachers, had the opportunity to have a meeting with Laura face-to-face, and some individuals did choose to do that. So gathering exit survey data. I know Laura's prepared that and will be sharing it with us as people go and as we have some themes about what, why is largely, we heard in those rounding conversations, that compensation. I mean, we heard the same, some of the same themes that you heard here tonight, people coming to speak. So we know that theme has definitely come through in what we've heard. I, I don't think it's any surprise. What you saw here is similar to the theme that we picked up that survey, just so you know. And I wasn't even going to say this because I, I don't want the two to seem connected, but it was given the week that contracts came out and didn't have that. So people were very upset and followed up with telling principals that. So we heard that loud and clear from people, for what that's worth. The other thing that's going to be new next year is what we would call stay interviews, the opposite of an exit interview. So we do a lot, we spend a lot of time talking to people about why do you leave? We would probably have relatively less time with the people who have stayed or the people who are staying. So at that three-year mark, what's happening? For a new teacher at that thirty-day mark, how are you feeling? What's happening? So trying to be a little bit more proactive, instead of talking to people at the end when they're leaving, what are the things we can capture about the people who are staying and, and trying to replicate that? The other thing we've done is a lot of review and revision on how we're supporting new teachers and new principals. So from that standpoint of retention, how can we do better? Unfortunately, a lot of what we learn about what we could do better had come in the form of exit interviews prior to this year. Thus, the pushing that up to the stay interview to try to capture that sooner.
So I'm sorry, the stay interviews are going to be happening. It's not just a goal. They are going to be happening.
No, we absolutely intend on doing those to follow up with all of our new teachers a little bit sooner. And our new employees to the district, probably within thirty to sixty days, give them some time to settle in and, you know, work through. And then, you know, ask questions like, how are you collaborating with your team? Are you getting enough response from your principal? Are you, you know, do you feel like you have all the tools and information you need to be successful? So making sure that they're comfortable in the space that they're in, as well as following up in kind of that three to five-year mark where we are seeing a lot of turnover to say, you know, we wanted to check in, see how things were going. Have you considered other opportunities outside of Franklin? If so, then are you comfortable in sharing those or where can we improve as someone who's looking to move on? So I'm trying to get that information earlier so we can make tactics around it to be more successful and retain employees.
I would imagine that will be really tricky to elicit honest responses.
It could be, yes, especially in the form of a face-to-face. People aren't necessarily comfortable with that. So I think we might take the option with exit survey. So the survey that we used for the exit survey purposes was anonymous. We did not track their names or any sort of information like that, but they could, as an option, email myself and say, hey, I'd really like to meet with you in person. I think there's some things that I want to share that can't necessarily be captured on the survey. So we could use that as an option if the people aren't necessarily comfortable with being honest.
Family and community engagement. So this is a place that I should highlight the whole thing in gold because this is all brand new. So we did, in the name of surveys, Mr. Sprague you were just talking about, we did send out a family survey. Families were allowed one response per student. So if you had student at multiple schools, it was, you could, if you have three kids, you could give three responses and it was based on schools. This came from work with the leadership team around this idea of family partnership. And then we also wanted to explore through the, through our coherence plan, goals, communication and also that satisfaction piece. So remember, we've played around with how are we going to measure satisfaction? So all three were accomplished in one survey, including the question that was added about how do you want to interact with the board? So I'll have that to share with you separately. And then also, we did a question around profile of a graduate. You saw in that report about people, we have a list of people who want to participate in that. And if they chose not to participate, they could list some of those traits that they wanted to consider to launch that work. So those may not always be on the survey, but those two questions were added for this particular administration of it. So these are the potential metrics. So this is based on baseline. The first time we gave the survey, we had around twelve hundred responses. So that could be multiple and one family member there per kid, not per family. So that's not a great response rate, but certainly not a poor response rate for a first administration. So it at least allowed us some baseline data. The questions that we kind of grouped into family partnership and learning, you'll see in your copy of the board report, I listed the questions for you since they're all brand new. So you can see what we're trying to achieve. We had about seventy-eight percent positive responses. Communication, seventy percent responses, which I thought it would be a good place to start. It kind of worked with how I envisioned the metric, that that's in the yellow, right? That's somewhere, I think that eighty percent or above is a general idea for where you want to be in terms of positivity. So I think that actually landed in a good place, a good measurement, but gives us some room to grow as we implement the framework. The best news of this survey is, you may or may not have heard Dr. Cohen talk about it in the past, but kind of the gold standard for measuring satisfaction is this net promoter score. People have strong feelings about net promoter score, so I can say I'm not going to take a lot of questions and argue about that. It's what we've decided to go with, right? And I explained that to you. So net promoter score comes from that question, how likely would you be to recommend Countrydale, whatever the child's school in would populate to a family or friends with children? And that was an amazingly high score. I know we've heard a lot of bad news, but by and large, the parents who responded or the family, parents, guardians who responded with that survey, anytime you pick an eight or a nine on that ten-point scale, that goes into the positive. Six or seven are passive and then five or below would be considered negative. So the mathematician people would say any positive score is great. Any score above fifty positive is very, very great. So we were close to that positive fifty. If you're above that, you're considered the five-star, if you're doing this in a business, or five-star opportunity. So that would be in the green. It doesn't mean we can't grow, but that was very good news that, that in terms of getting at that community or family pride and would you recommend Franklin? Doesn't mean we don't have, but that was the only question. So that score is just derived from that, would you recommend Franklin question? We'll be working with schools and principals to this, this idea of partnership. So we used to call it family engagement. We've more embraced it as partnership. So as we do this work together, how do we make sure parents have language translation? How do we make sure they know what's inspected of a third grader in our district? How do they know, similar to what you, and as I'm reflecting on what you said, Dr. Khan, maybe this would be an avenue. How do parents feel like kids can get help? Are they supported socially and emotionally? Maybe this is an avenue to add a tool, as I reflect on what you said, to help. So we'll be taking on that work moving forward next year. So questions about that new survey? Fiscal stewardship with Mr. Cromie just coming on board, we will update these in fall, right? I know you've been waiting, but these metrics have kind of been pushed and pushed. Had I been able to do this in June maybe, but, but now we've just transitioned. So we'll wait and start fresh with that with fall. So nothing new to report here. I don't believe the metrics will change, but this is what we have moving forward.
We've been in green, we've been in the green.
Correct. We have. And I'm not secretly not moving it because they're all going to be red. It's not like a secret. So we just haven't, in all fairness, allow people to get transitioned and then move forward. The one additional thing that will look different at the start of school, not the one thing, but something we know already that's scheduled on the calendars as Mr. Cromie wants to and has already scheduled readiness check-ins with each school. So having a team of people go over with each principal from a business and operations type standpoint, do you have everything you need, what's going on, trying to, again, that switch from reactive to proactive? What are the proactive things we can front load to make sure employees are feeling more and most ready and that they have what they need? Another avenue, not for students, but for principals for the most part of this time, to make sure we're not being reactive. What can we push proactive? I don't know if you want to say anymore about that, but.
No, I, I would just add, it's just something that I've done in the past at other buildings or other school districts. So we. So we simply go over, we check what buildings and grounds, the issues do you have? What technology issues do you have? What curriculum issues do you have? Essentially creates a checklist for us to make sure by September 1, they have everything they need and they're ready to go. As much as we try to plan during the summer, at times, we're just not on everybody's schedule as they would like us to be. But it gives us a good checklist to, like I said, be prepared, help them be prepared for the beginning of school. And we can also at times provide them the timeline to, textbooks haven't come in, they're going to be here on the 10th. Or that's scheduled for next week, so you should be ready to go, type of thing.
So Mr. Cromie, do you think the next year check-in with the staff must be before they go on summer break? So that you have sufficient time to prepare the building or the resources or whatever they need?
So we're going to do two sets of meetings. So we're, we're going to do a January meeting, which essentially will set up 23, 24. So not that we want to jump too far ahead here. But that gives, and that will be like everybody from district office going over there and going through an entire list, top to bottom. Typically, these readiness check-ins, while I've invited a whole bunch of people, are typically Mr. Blessington, myself, Mr. Stumbel, and Ms. Alinsky, like just the four of us, we're going to go over there and it's like 15, 20 minutes, give us the bullet points and we're going to hammer that out. January is the much larger one where we do all the planning and that helps us get set up for that. So would we go back over in May? No, because we already have the game plan ready to go. And then our departments will be setting up their planning to get started. It also gives us a, a good opportunity. I get to learn a little bit more about their school improvement plans and things like that and, and what they're doing, as well as the rest of the team. And then it helps our, our leaders to really delve into those areas a little bit more to help line up for the following year as well. And where we can improve or what's going well or end of those metrics.
It was more of like an August 1st type situation than then in January.
So the check-in ones is August 1st, type like that first week in August, as soon as principals come back. Like again, just give us the bullet list. December, or the January one, that's typically a much longer meeting, probably an hour-ish.
Sure.
Maybe a little bit more. And that one's much more principal-driven from a standpoint of here are things I'd like to see or things that we'd like to do. Again, some of them you can do, some we can't, knocking out this entire wall so we could make this one big room. Maybe we have the funds to do that, maybe we don't. Or maybe it moves it up the priority list, type of conversations. And then from a curricular standpoint, all of those things will be considered as well.
Great, thank you.
The last part of your report that you saw, we put the school improvement plan, same that you have seen. It just will have an extra, had an extra line with end of year updates. Thank you for some of you who provided feedback about how to best read those. This was our first time through with that template. So any of the rest of you have feedback, it's nice to have someone who doesn't look at them every day, look at them and see how we can better format that. So I welcome that. The format worked well, having some choice in goals, but not a lot of choice in goals. I think principals like that and, and we like that at the district, that there was some commonality, the same but different, I call it. I do like the suggestion to make the adjustment of met, not met with goals. It doesn't get that tight, but is there a way to report that out clearly to all of you? Whether it's the red, yellow, green system in a smaller format or something like that, that was a suggestion. Next year, you'll see tighter alignment to the tactics in the work. So we attempted that this year a little bit, but I think it's much more clear. I'll share those with you to end. Principals have done some work having more intentional membership on their school improvement teams. So you don't want all five fifth-grade teachers or no kindergarten teachers. So with the addition of coaches and trying hard to spread that out where possible. Good news is we had, in some buildings, more people, I had calls from three different principals. How big can this team get? I have a lot of people who want to be a part of this, which is a good problem to have. Tactics for next year. So if you remember, the tactics are the very bottom part of this scorecard. I provided these for you to see easier. I won't go into full detail for, for time, but I will tell you that I feel very excited that our leadership team kind of looked back on all our work from this past year and where are we at with all these strands? And kind of distilled that down into tactics. So they feel much more homegrown, for lack of a better word, at, at least for me, being new at this time last year. I think it feels more aligned. So these will be the four buckets that guide our professional development, that guide principal's school improvement planning, that guide our work at the district. So everything we do in some way, shape or form should not only be aligned to those larger school improve, or excuse me, coherence plan goals, but this helps refine that. So if we need to spend time on something, it should be to move one of these things forward. So it helps from a decision-making standpoint at the district.
Anybody have further questions?
I guess, how are the tactics determined?
Just by a group. So we did some, here's, to be honest with you, we did a lot of work of reflecting. Then we all sat in a group and said, here are the themes for the things that we think as a leadership team are most important. And we went around and each person said, here are the two pieces of work I think are absolutely most important. And these were the top four vote getters. With the exception of tactic four, that was a non-negotiable because we had said earlier in our coherence plan work that we would add in the parent framework. So people thought that was a good thing. But even if they would not have voted on that, that would have been part of the framework because we made that commitment when we did the three-year coherence.
These are all principals?
Principals, district leadership, directors, I'm trying to think, our leadership team. So everybody you see here, plus Ms. Sunstrom, Mr. Borzik, Data, all the principals, assistant principals, Mr. Kafka. So that district-level leadership team, plus principals and assistant principals.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Dr. Mo.
Item B, 22, 23, budget draft number one approval, Mr. Cromie, please. So what you see before you is a roll-up of the budget that Jim presented or Mr. Millsor presented back in June. So that document has not been changed, but for instance, our July 1, general aid estimate has come in. Although that came in significantly higher, over $25 million. It still shows $24.1 million from a general aid standpoint. So I just carried that document forward, rolled those up into these amounts. One of the things that's really important about the first budget draft is it really goes through the approval process essentially as it's our approval to get the fiscal year started. So pay payroll, pay our initial bills to get school up and running. Ultimately, we'll have an annual meeting, so that'll have some updated numbers in it. And the board will then officially approve a budget in October. By then, we'll have all of these unknowns, third Friday count. What is our actual general aid? What were our actual property tax levy be? What will our actual staffing be? As Ms. Alincourt added, we still have some staff to hire. So while we have estimated salaries or hourly rates, we'll hire those individuals. They'll get insurance or they'll choose a different option. Like we'll calculate all of those unknowns at this point. So this is really, I say formality because formality in starting the school year, we have to get July 1 started, even though we have a whole bunch of unknowns that don't come in until October 15th, which in my world is kind of weird that we're 25% of the way through the year and then we decide to finally approve a budget. But ultimately, it's the way it's set up and it's the world that we have to live in, so. All right, any questions?
Well, what if the, what if we want to make changes? What if the board wants to directly change? When will we do, do that? When is the best time to do that?
So ultimately, I think what would have to funnel through is things would be discussed at the board level. So we're talking about the budget now. So ultimately, approving this budget sets nothing in stone, other than we can pay people and we can buy supplies and be ready for September 1. Right? So ultimately, we could discuss things tonight because they're on here and say for future budgets, we would like to do this. Or for future budgets, we would like to, or future budget presentations, consider this. And those things can all be added, we can discuss all those. And then ultimately, we should have all of those parameters discussed prior to the October 2nd board meeting where we're going to officially approve. At that point in time, I don't know if we want to be debating because we have to fix everything that night and have it approved. Ultimately, to have our tax levy in, right? So we'd like to have all those things ironed out prior to then. But we could discuss now, we can certainly discuss at the annual meeting or any other time we present some items on the budget.
Well, I would like to, and I don't know if board members are prepared or would like to discuss it at this time, but my understanding is that this budget as presented includes at least $1.5 million of bond defeesance?
That is correct.
Which is not anything that we are, that we have to pay, is discretionary, is that correct?
Correct, a defeesance is discretionary.
Discretionary. So as a board or as a district, we could reallocate that tax levy to other purposes?
We cannot, that is for Fund 39 debt only. So it cannot be allocated to Fund 10 or Fund 27 operating costs or Fund 50 food services.
Okay, so.
Only discretionary under debt service.
Right, so we could reduce the tax levy then to the taxpayers?
We could, yes.
And I would like the board to think about doing that. It's 1.5 million. I'm not saying we reduce the levy another 1.5 million, but right now it's 100,000, is that what it is total?
I'm sorry.
What number are you talking about, Linda? Can you direct us to a page or a line, please?
Well, that's part of the problem is that all we have here in front of us is.
I think we can all reference the budget document that was given to us at the last meeting. So feel free to give us a page number.
Page four. You'll notice that the levy, which includes three separate levies, general fund, debt service and the community rec, overall, it's going down 107,000. We could be, I'm suggesting we could increase, increase that reduction as much as a half a million, 500,000, and not impact anything in the general fund or the community rec.
What is the benefit of the bond defeesance as proposed in the budget?
So a bond defeesance, kind of just for some general information, essentially prepaying your mortgage. So bonds are a little bit different than mortgages. Where I go get a mortgage, I get 30 years, same rate, I pay the same amount every month. Bonds, we pay two times a year. We pay interest yearly in October, we pay interest yearly in April. And then in April, we also pay the premium portion of a debt. And those premium amounts can vary from year to year, depending on your current debt. So we have a little bit of flexibility in how those are originally set up. Ultimately, a school board would choose to defees debt because we can help prepay that and save typically significant amounts of interest. So I worked with our financial advisor, a financial advisor I've worked with in the past to get some estimates. And ultimately, we would save about 49 cents in interest for every dollar we defeesed. So on 1.5 million dollars, we would save approximately $750,000 of interest over the next 17 years of the debt that we would defees. Ultimately, with general aid coming in higher on the July 1 aid estimate, we probably could defees upwards of $3.8 million and save about $1.85 million of interest to our taxpayers, again, over that 17 years of life on the debt. And then that also lowers our overall debt, so it shrinks that amount. So if we were to go out and procure more debt for another issue, ultimately, our rating would have a greater, or our rating would be more greatly affected by a lower overall debt to our net property value in the city of Franklin.
Linda, what are your thoughts about foregoing that proposal in light of the fact that we're likely going to have to build a new elementary school in the next five to 10 years?
Well, I want you to also look on page four and you'll look at debt service. So the last three years, we have increased our tax levy for debt every single year, even though we're hearing that we're saving money. I don't believe that the, the million dollars over 17 years is as valuable to us as the savings to our taxpayers today in this economy and at this time.
Okay, that's an argument.
And if you look at the debt schedule, which is in the document on page 30, it's structured to be very consistent over the next 17 years. So we, we don't have to worry about needing to levy more to pay our debt, we're set for debt.
Except if we have to take out more debt.
We have to take out more debt at some point.
That's correct, but that would be a referendum of which our citizens will approve of that. So it's not like we have to save this money for that. It's, I think we, we, you know, our taxpayers deserve some break here. And we can do this without hurting the general fund.
What, what, if you, we were to do what you're suggesting, how would that impact your average house homeowner in the, in the city? Like how much would that?
We'd have to figure it out.
Yeah, I don't have figured out on the mill rate, but so right now, even with a $3.81 million defeesance, I have our mill rate going from $9.14 to $9.13 per thousand dollars.
Our mill rate's going down already, correct?
But the mill rate's only one piece. And I guess, does it matter what that is per, you don't want to save a half a million dollars taxpayer money? I mean, does it matter?
I guess it depends if you're having a short-term vision or a long, a long-term vision.
I guess I, I would just argue, we're not saving any taxpayer money by defeesing. We're lowering property taxes. By defeesing, we would be saving $1.85 million of taxpayer money over the long term of a loan. So think refinancing your house. If we refinance my house, I save money on my mortgage. If I don't refinance my house, I don't pay to refinance it, but I don't save any money. I'm just continuing to pay the same amount.
Linda, do you think the defeesent, the defeesment amount should be zero?
I, you're asking me? Yeah, I think it should be zero. But I'm not asking for that because I know you're not, no one's going to even consider that.
Why do you think no one would consider it?
Consider what?
Why do you think no one would consider it?
The 1.5?
Zero.
Zero? That would mean we are going to reduce levy 1.5 million dollars. You, you're not, you're, everybody's hesitating to reduce it to half a million.
Okay, I didn't follow that, but that's okay.
But you're talking as if we're saving money. We're not, or we're not spending it, any money by putting into the defeesance. We're moving it to the side to reduce borrowing and give us better credit rating for future borrow.
The budget that's here right now increases the tax levy for debt service, does it not?
Yes.
So we are increasing the cost to our taxpayers so we can pay off debt. And we're telling them we're saving it?
Well, it's the taxpayer's debt, though, really, isn't it?
What pays for the debt?
The tax levy.
Exactly. So if we don't do that, if we don't prepay it.
Well, this will be a good conversation to have for us to have.
That tax money stays in my pocket.
Okay.
That's what saving tax levy means to me.
This will be an interesting thing for people to comment in on our taxpayers. What, it's, it's, it sounds like a very fundamental difference in approach to debt management. And that's okay. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'll be interested to hear people's opinions.
I guess ultimately, I would add, right? The taxpayers of the community approve referendums, right? They go to vote, they say build elementary school, build whatever. And if they pass it, they pass it. So ultimately, they've entrusted us to do the best we can with the dollars they've entrusted us to do it. Debt is part of that. We front, just like any, any building project, you take money out so you can actually build the item and use it and then you pay it long-term, right? So I would argue that as a community member, defeesing the dollars actually saves me in the long run of the dollars that I approved for you from a referendum standpoint.
I would agree with you only if you, the money you use to defees it was already in the bank, in the fund balance.
Okay.
But you're raising taxes to do that, correct?
I would say we're maintaining the levels that we've had over the past several years.
We are increasing tax levy, we have increased a million dollars over three years.
All right, Linda, you've made your point. Is there any other issues you'd like here to discuss?
Well, what are we going to do about this issue? Are we, oh, do anybody?
Do we vote on that today or do we vote on this?
Well, I, I think ultimately.
I got the sense we vote on this in October.
Ultimately, I would like to bring what's called a not to exceed to the board. So a not to exceed essentially sets a defeesance limit. The board can ultimately say, nope, we're not even going to do it. Or we can say, we don't want to exceed $3.81 million, which I think we could fit under. Or you could pick any number between that. And I've done that in the past where I've taken it to the board typically around September, once we have a little clearer idea of things over the course of the entire budget. So it's kind of set the tax levy. Remember, tax levy is Fund 10, it's Fund 39, it's community ed rec, right? So once we have those pieces a little bit more solidified, I bring that. And then ultimately, the board decides, yes, that number's good, no, that number's not good, or we don't want anything.
I'd like to know a little bit more information on what this would actually do, this change to the average, like rate per 100,000 on a home, before I make this decision. If this is, if this is merely a performative change, I'm not particularly interested in doing it.
I am definitely all for saving the taxes, you know, but I think we have to have a complete understanding of exactly if we are paying upfront. So I think you have to have a clear description of, okay, we are doing this, what are the pros and the cons?
Yes.
Because I think without that, kind of, you know, I like to hear both the side of the arguments. And then I think we have a better understanding because. and then I think we have a better understanding because if you were to ask me, any person would like to save money. I'm a taxpayer too, I like to save the money. Then especially in this economy, each and every penny counts. But if I'm saving a penny now, is it, I'm going to pay five cents actually down the road for something? I think for that I have to have a clear understanding. I'm all for saving money, for each and every penny is important, especially in this inflation, you know, everyone is hurting. We want to kind of make sure the taxpayers are, we as elected officials are responsible for this money. We want to utilize the money to the best profit, but I think having a complete detailed information on that aspect would be very important.
I agree, and I, I think, I wonder if, I wonder if this is something that can be an, can be a.
Special focus.
A special focus, we have, we are, we are relatively light on agenda items for August. If this is something that, if this is something that we could, we could discuss in earnest and, and in, in the August meeting and.
That was my, my question is, do we have enough time before August to have maybe a better idea? You know, not just hearing about it tonight, but kind of have a, almost like a full proposal of both, both things.
It's not complicated, I mean, you have in front of you.
Well, Linda, not everyone's as good at this as you.
I just want to say, look at page 30, that is our debt service. This assumes no defeasance, so this is what we would pay if we did that, if we went to zero. Is that correct?
Yes.
It would be interesting to compare if we did defees. I mean, that's really what I would want to see, the difference there, and then what this would actually do to a property tax bill. Linda's proposal?
All that can be put together for the August meeting.
Fabulous.
Thank you.
I have one other item.
Please.
I also do not feel that this current budget has presented increases the tax levy for community and rec by, I'm sorry, it's not on here, but what, 100,000, is that what it is?
Approximately, yes.
And this, we had this discussion last year because the community rec department, program fees support the cost, program cost.
Of programming.
So why are we increasing tax levy? If you look at the, page that on. Page 33, that's where you can see the tax levy going up 103,000. They are reducing program fees and we should not be substituting program, tax levy for program fees.
Can you comment on that, Mr. Cromie? Is this, is this substituting for program fees?
So again, I've been here a short time. My understanding of the community rec department is programming fees cover the cost of the, running the program itself. So whatever staff would be needed or supplies would be needed. It is not intended to cover all of the individuals who work in the entire recreation, community ed and rec department entirely. That includes, as Coach Peddell was here earlier discussing, like, all of our facilities are used after school, a lot of them by the recreation or community, and getting them some assistance in the custodial department because our custodians, they cannot cover all of the things that the buildings are entirely doing. So having some custodial, a time assigned directly to that, with some additional help that was needed just given the massive amount that our facilities are used. I don't want to say 24/7, but I would say pretty much from 3 o'clock or 3:30 till 10 o'clock in my time, pretty much every gym is being used consistently and a lot of the fields as well during that particular time.
Well, I would like to point out that on page 33, that salary and benefits are being reduced in this budget by 70,000.
Yep.
So.
Good point.
There's not additional salary costs, it needs to be supported by program fees.
So the items that I sent to the board in response to the questions show the updated numbers, and part of the conversation that was brought to my attention from Mr. Anderson in the community ed and rec department is that we were missing a couple of individuals who are in the community ed rec program. So you saw some slightly different numbers than what I presented to you. I had updated those in Skyward prior to completely evaluating all the questions. So you're going to get to see the updated numbers that'll be brought forth with the annual meeting that are slightly higher than the numbers as entirely presented in this budget. Again, I will go back to the purpose of this budget is really to get the fiscal year started. It's not the end all be all of the, the things that we're doing. So I feel comfortable updating those in Skyward at this point, and ultimately we'll decide exactly what those are going to be come October.
I think a lot of the program fees, it would be interesting to compare with enrollment data. If program fees are down, which I believe you addressed in one of the questions you answered, because fewer people enrolled than we predicted that they would, then it would be a question of, do we say we're going to make up our program fees by charging everybody a higher amount to compensate for decreased enrollment? Or do we accept the fact that our program fees are down because there was a lower enrollment last year?
So I think we can really look at three avenues. You can look at increasing program fees to ensure that the program runs. That's, that's one avenue. Two, you could set a certain standard that says, at the very, if we cannot cover programming regardless of how many people sign up, we're simply not going to run it. So both of those are going to affect the general community simply from a programming standpoint, whether I'm paying to attend it or whether it's going to be canceled on me. The third one also affects the community, it just affects it differently, and that would be to say, we'll increase the tax levy to help cover the cost so we can maintain as much programming as possible even if it doesn't run 100% dollar for dollar. All three affect the community, they just all three affect them different ways. And those would really be the strategies to try to mitigate as much as you possibly could ebbs and flows in number of participants inside of programming.
I think, go ahead. I, I, I think, you know, we had this discussion about that in the, one of the past meetings too. Because the school district is assigned with the rec, you know, running the rec program, I think we just need to be clear with the community is that we are providing this service, just like we provided education service to the students. We are providing this service, we are trying to collect as much as fees as possible. But just because we are running the service, which, of course, can we say that we are not going to run the service? Because it is in our, within our buildings. So we can't give it to the, for example, to the city to run the services. We have to run the services because this building structures are within our, our organization authority assets. So we have to run this service. The question is that, we have to run this service just because instead of 10, 5 people enroll, I think, I don't think it's fair for the 5 people to start paying more because when you enroll in a program, you enroll with the, hey, you know, I'm going to pay X dollars of amount. So it is a service which you're providing to the community. And this has a school district because this, when you are within the school district authority, we are just kind of became so called responsible for not only product education but also running the rec program, you know, services. So I think we just have to make clear, Linda, I think, you know, we, if you are increasing the tax levy for that purpose, we just have to be clear that it's not the school district which is doing it. It's because the school district is running specifically for this rec program. So you, there are two different things, because for example, your school district is, this is just a, just because we are responsible for running it, we are charging it, but it's separate from the school district day-to-day operations. This is just an extra added responsibility which the school district is doing. And if it has to have a tax levy, it's, someone has to pay for it. Either the city pays for it, if city's running it, or the school district, someone has to pay for that. Or the students, citizens have to pay for it. But I don't feel it's fair for students, citizens to, instead of paying $50, or if they say, you know what, actually 5 people only showed up instead of 10, now you're going to charge you 100 dollars. People have a budget.
Yeah, I fundamentally agree with Hector Khan on that.
I guess I, I'm confused. This levy is, we don't, we're not required to provide the program.
Yes, we are.
It's.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, we are.
There was an agreement made with the city a long time ago that we would do the recreation program.
Well, it's an agreement that could be changed, but in any case.
It can't be changed, it can't be changed by edict.
I don't want to focus on that.
It can't be changed by your edict, Linda.
No, what I'm saying is that we're increasing it 100, we are responsible for these expenditures. If, if the people aren't showing up for the classes and you adjust the cost, the revenue should follow the cost. Also, I want to point out that if you look at the actuals one year back, the fees did cover the cost, there, there's a positive fund balance. Revenues exceeded expenditures in the last actual information you have in front of you.
But you, you didn't, you didn't like it when that happened either? You didn't like there to be a fund balance for the rec department?
I don't, I don't want to focus on the fund balance, you're right, I can go there too, but I, I'm not bringing that up right now.
Okay.
So i- i- in that scenario, if we budget for, with a possible tax levy, but actually we might collect more fees and we may, may be positive, the same thing which happened last year too. Am I right, Mr. Cromie?
Correct, yep.
We, as a board, remove the increase and let it run as a balanced without any increase in the tax levy.
But that, that will come in October before we decide on the final vote. Am I right, Mr. Cromie?
That is, but ultimately, the numbers I provided you, should we keep the tax levy back at 626,000 dollars would show Fund 81 in a deficit of 103,000 dollars. And ultimately, that's where you'd have to approve. I would not feel comfortable just saying, well, I'll just throw 103,000 dollars into fees and we're going to make that up. First of all, I've only been here for 13 days if you include the weekend. So like, I don't feel really good about that. Second, I truthfully don't know enough about the programming to say, yep, we're going to increase that, we're not going to increase that. Ultimately, we make projections in almost everything that we're going to do in relation to community ed rec. And you can go back through some history. We know that a couple of years ago, community ed rec across the country was entirely, I don't want to say destroyed, but so thrown up into the air from COVID that we really have to go back to 2019, 20 fall, and 2018, 19 spring if we want to really look at what happened in those particular times to get some numbers. So I don't have a crystal ball that says this is what happens with rec programming two years post pandemic, because I've never been alive for one. So ultimately, we're, we're doing the best we can, right? So I would not feel comfortable modifying any of the revenues that Mr. Anderson has put together and saying, nope, I think this is wrong. He lives it, that's his world to live. He's going to tell me, this is what we've had in the past, this is what I think we're going to be able to project for these moving forward. This is the cost associated to run that particular program. Ultimately, putting the tax levy back to 626,000, I would bring to you a budget that says Fund 81 is going to run 103 dollars, or 103,000 in the red. Because I couldn't reasonably tell you anything different.
Well, we still could, again, we could let it run in the red because we have fund balance available. Again, this is the same discussion as last year, it, that could happen, you're correct, it could be short. But there's fund balance that could buffer that, and then next year you can.
Linda, you just said that's not what fund balance is for in a meeting, in a conversation prior to the meeting.
I did, no, that's not what, I am not saying that we should spend the fund balance for.
Operating expenses?
I'm saying that the revenue should cover the operating expenses. We might be, and you're saying, well, it might not happen. Well, I'm saying if it doesn't happen, but it should happen because that's the, our philosophy or our operation, operational premise here is that the program fee should cover the cost.
Is that our philosophy? My understanding is that the program fees cover the program, the programming, and that there is a fixed overhead to having a community ed and recreation department.
Yes, and that is 720, there's 626,000 of levy in here that is that base.
Yes.
That doesn't disappear, it stays there.
Okay, that's not what you were saying. You were saying the programming, the programs should cover every aspect of community ed and rec.
Of the program cost.
Okay. Well, our program fees are actually budgeted here to go down, so.
I think, again, we have different numbers here. Mr. Cromie, I think you provided some different numbers, I'm not sure if all the board members have those in front of them. So there's two sets of numbers being talked about here. So it's not, I don't know if we're going to wrap this up, the real question is, are we going to add another 103,000 of increased cost to our taxpayers for the community rec next year? Are you going to add that to their tax bill?
That is the question.
Another 103,000.
That is the question.
When we want program fees to reflect the use of what's happening in the community rec.
I don't want someone to have to pay $50 if they signed up for a $25 program if enrollment is done.
I don't think we're going to be changing these fees.
You don't know that though, you're just guessing. You don't know what's going on with the fees.
Well, they have to put out a program every, you know.
Yeah.
And people can decide if they want to participate or not. They're not going to show up on the, the other class and say, oh, sorry, only 10 people, we assume 20, so you all have to pay the difference, is that what, I'm not suggesting that, I don't think that's going to happen.
Okay, Linda, let's say 103,000 is a big amount, completely. I, 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 let's calculate, if I, for example, 103,000 by the taxpayer, how many cents is it coming to individual taxpayer extra? 103,000 dollars is a large amount, what do you think, Mr. Cromie?
Less than a penn, less than a penny?
But they're already paying 626,000.
Yes, Linda, but listen to Mr. Cromie, less than a penny.
But that doesn't, that, yes, there's an, there's an amount that it costs to, there's an amount that it costs to run this program.
It's 16% increase, 16% increase.
What, what is, what's, what's the overhead increase? Can, can we get some clarity on that?
Yep.
Thank you.
But I think definitely you must try to save each and every penny if possible. But in the past, program fees have been positive, you know, we were able to do that. And I think, I am sure, especially with the, the way, by the grace of God, the code is going away, I think we will have a good, successful rec program year. So I'm hoping that we will have a program fees back to what we expected, or what we're expecting as such, so.
I'm uncomfortable with conversations that treat our responsibility to the community ed and rec department as somehow less than our responsibilities to the school district. It's a much smaller budgetary line item for us, but it, we, we bear that responsibility. And so that's all I have to say about that.
I have a question about the levy, is that, is that levied across the school district or the city of Franklin, this valuation?
So it's part of the school district's valuation.
It's part of the school district's valuation, so this is a.
We don't levy this on behalf of the city, we levy this on behalf of us because we handle the operations. So all the bills, all the revenues run through our business office, so ultimately that tax levy comes to us.
Yes, I understand it comes to the district, but does it go on the tax bill of the?
Towards the school district.
She's wondering if it goes to people who are City of Franklin, Oak Creek Schools, whether they pay this levy.
So our tax levy rate gets broken out into multiple different buckets. So we're going to have a Fund 10 general operating budget. That's going to go to City of Franklin residents who attend Franklin Public Schools. We're going to have a debt service levy, that's going to go to Franklin residents who attend Franklin Public Schools. We're going to have a community ed rec, uh, uh, tax levy, that's going to go to, again, Franklin Public Schools residents, even though it affects all residents of Franklin because it is our tax levy. So all of those buckets get assigned to us, but all members of the City of Franklin, regardless of whether they're from Whitnall, Franklin Public Schools, or Oak Creek Franklin, are eligible to participate in our programs. Very similar to when I was Oak Creek, right? Our community rec tax levy went to Oak Creek Franklin, so some of, up to 35th Street or, you know, the zigzag along there. And all of the residents that lived in that were able to participate in all of those recreation programs, whether their address was Oak Creek or their address was Franklin. We didn't decipher between the two when it came to who is eligible and who is not.
I guess I'm still not, it's. How does the DPI view this tax levy? In terms of, you know, limits and all that?
The DPI has nothing to do with this tax levy, does it?
The only thing DPI says is that you cannot make a Fund 10 transfer to your community ed and recreation program because it is a taxable fund within the accounting system. So they do not let you do that. So if Fund 50, our food service, were to run negative, we could make a Fund 10 transfer because it's a non-taxable fund. Our community ed rec is a taxable fund, so they won't allow that. That's the only thing that they're concerned with when it comes to essentially the finances of your community ed rec program.
So it's basically just a separate.
Just a separate bucket of money.
Which is why we levy it separately.
Correct, yep, just a separate pot of money.
So if you become negative on that, so hypothetically, if we assume and we accept what Linda is proposing, we don't increase the tax levy on that. And if, God forbid, we run negative, how will we compensate that? Because if you can't transfer from Fund 10, then where is that money going to come then?
Great question. So you are required the following year to levy, so it can run negative, but the following year you are required to levy at minimum the additional amount it would take you to put you at zero.
Okay.
We're at zero, we're at 1.1.
And then what if it becomes positive? So in a scenario, so there's one scenario in which we levy now, don't levy now. So in a scenario, so there's one scenario in which we levy now, don't levy now, it turns negative, we have to levy next year, am I right?
Mm-hmm.
One scenario is that we levy now, we turn positive, which I'm expecting, I'm hoping, and then can we then give it back to the community to decrease the tax levy next year?
Can you lower the levy next year? Yep, absolutely.
So Linda, what do you think will be the right thing to do?
Increase it this year.
And then increase it next year if you have to?
I think we should figure out what this.
You don't have to. We got a fund balance of 1.1 million.
Thank you.
On the community and education rec. So we could go one point, we could run the whole, no, not the whole thing. We could run almost the whole, we could run 70% of it and not charge anything for fees or anything. Because we have a fund balance there. But having a fund balance isn't a bad thing.
Well, eventually what we're, eventually what we're going to have to decide with community ed and rec is in order to, because program levels are going to be, are going to be back at the level they were once, after two-year sort of down, down cycle, we're going to have to decide at some point if we're going to use that fund balance that we have to, to help build, build some sort of new building in order to house community ed, more community ed and rec.
That was that lengthy conversation we had last year.
Yeah, I don't want to have that now.
No, I don't want to have it now either, but that's, that's what, that's why we have, that's why we have a fund balance.
Because we don't have a capital improvement fund to which we can transfer that money like we do for the school.
Correct. Just to add to what Dr. Khan had said before, so we're a holistic community ed and rec program. Cradle to grave sounds a little bit morbid, but ideally, from the time they're born till the oldest person in our communities who were entitled or entrenched with serving, right? And so providing the appropriate space, especially when we think September 1st to June 10th, or whatever day school ends, our school, there's no daytime programming for anybody who's not school age.
Couple rooms in Ben Franklin, I think, go.
Because, like, we're pretty much chock tight district-wide for the most part. And so thinking about those spaces, to your point, is where do they go? We have historically used the library. The library, I believe, is done as of 2022 because of some sort of continuous calendar issue that they have. We're renting the same space every week over a consistent year or something they don't want to do. I don't know the total particulars. I was kind of given that particular piece. So now we're even dropping space down a little bit further. So finding adequate space for our before-school residents and our post-graduating residences, we're going to have to figure that out at some point to be able to do that.
So let's get some clarity on the increase in the non-program-related costs of the community ed and rec budget. And.
Yep, because I, you know, I.
Think about what our priorities are.
I don't, I think 16% increase in one year is, is much, is a bit much, so.
Let's see what it's for.
We'll work on that.
Are there other questions regarding the budget?
I'm just going to just register my opposition to the decrease in the music staffing model. I'm not going to hold up the approval of the budget on it, but I think it's poor decision.
I guess I also, before we wrap it up, I'd like to know how the ESAR funds are, are being used and what they're funding. And I know that's in flux, so I don't expect you to answer that now.
Well, I can answer it the best I can. So ESAR funds are doing a couple of things. They have provided some additional staffing in the past, although that staffing is trying to be absorbed within our normal budget. Particular cycle. But I know we also have some curricular adoptions in there to help catch us back up entirely to where we probably should be. It's a very similar process that we had used in Oak Creek that Mr. Milzer was using here. But ultimately, we're using it as much to operate as possible, meaning we're trying to put things in that we would normally do and reclaim the funds through ESAR. Ultimately, that's what we were tasked with from the federal government down through the states, is to use it to operate. So if we were to just continually add and add and add things, at some point, there's no dollars to continue to add. How are we going to do that? So we're trying to put as many normal operational things in, claim the dollars to help balance our budget to the tune of about 1.8 million dollars in what's being presented to you, which ultimately, we have to determine where does 1.8 million dollars come from next fiscal year, just to do everything exactly the same at the same cost as this year.
Welcome to the district.
We do have one-time adjustments, so they can help offset that. I mean, there's things built in here that come off as the next year gets closer.
Revenues or expenses don't matter to me as long as it's 1.8 million dollars, right? So as long as we can return back to whole, I don't care if we can produce more revenue, I don't care if we can reduce expenses. To me, they're the same, as long as the net comes back to zero.
But we still, we did get additional, again, I don't want to prolong this because we know the state revenues that came in are sizable, correct?
Yeah.
Six figures, more than a million, or?
Multiple millions of dollars we're going to receive in state aid. However, it's not spendable dollars.
Right.
It is purely deflating the tax levy and offsetting the tax levy. So it's not, it's not $2 million that we can now go hire 50 teachers with. It's $2 million that we just won't tax, $2 million. Simply trading, robbing Peter to pay Paul.
I'm done, thank you.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the first budget of the draft for '22, '23.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All right, I think we need a roll call vote, please.
All right, Mr. Sprague.
Aye.
Mrs. Wachowski.
I'm going to have to say no at this point.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Aye.
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
I vote aye. Passes.
Thank you.
Passes. '22, '23 FEA wage agreement approval. Ms. Lankur and Mr. Cromie, please. So I'm just going to group C, D, and E together for the purposes of discussion, because they'll all deal with the same percentage increase of 2.7%. They are broken out differently, given contractual agreements that must be made with two of the groups, and then applying the 2.7% raise to all employees who don't fit into those two groups. So originally budgeted, and what you saw in the preliminary budget was 2.5%. Per the board's move at the last board meeting, the move to 2.7% would be applied to all those groups. Important to know, that's a aggregate number, right? So we've heard some teachers talk about if they're at the top, they're getting a smaller amount than at the bottom. So that 2.7% creates pools of money.
2.7?
2.7?
Yeah, 2.7. So that 2.7% creates pools of money, which then gets divvied up, for the most part, by a percentage basis. But we do try to take teachers at the bottom and move them up slightly faster than teachers at the top, given that we know retaining staff is an important piece, and we're trying to eliminate staff leaving early in their careers, one, two, three, four, five years. In the districts I've been in, the philosophy is exactly the same. We're trying to keep teachers not for the next 30 years, because that logic has shifted. But how do we get you to 10? If we can get you 10, how do we get you to 15? If we can get you to 15, how do we get you to 20? Rather than, my goal is 30 years right away at the very beginning, because we know that that's going to be a really, I don't even know if insurmountable is the right word, but it's going to be a really hard task. And that's in every industry, right, is maintaining staff at your particular place of employment. So how do we continue to do that? So again, we've applied a little bit heavier, so maybe 3% at the bottom versus a smaller percentage at the top. Not trying to vary it between like four and one, but slightly higher at the bottom than at the top.
So I think that that just have to be clarity, I think, some people will get 3%, and some people at the top will get a fixed amount, as we said, you know? So I think, you know.
Am I right?
That's, you know, that's, that's the understanding which we, I think we discussed with the board and we approved. So basically, it's a 2.7% average, but it varies between 3% to a set amount as such.
Correct.
And taking into consideration the input which we received, you know, during the committee comments and all that stuff, I think we had a good discussion, and I think we went from actually it was two to, you know, basically it was, going from 2% to 3%, taking into consideration the committee comments, you know, we want to appreciate the teachers and all that stuff.
Yep.
I am interested in possibly, if we have to go back and look at whether the sort of fixed rate for increase for the top earners is truly something that, because the, the way I understood that decision was that it was very much a collaborative decision between our staff and our budgeting and HR department. And I guess I didn't, and again, this is just a few people who came to community comment, but they came to community comment, I didn't get the sense that that's necessarily a shared value anymore. So I wonder if there wouldn't be some value in reforming your, your salary review committee, or however you want to approach it, but just to confirm, to me at least, that that really is the shared value of our staff. Does that make sense? Thank you.
Well, and I do think that's one of the, one of the things that we talked about, Angie, in the, in the interview process, a great deal was, was retaining teachers.
Yep.
And, and we're very happy with what we heard. And so I think going forward, you know, that these are decisions that, these are decisions that were made in the past that aren't necessarily, that won't necessarily be shared going forward, so.
It's certainly a charge.
So it's certainly, you know, certainly something to be discussed further at a later date. But I think, I, I think the task before us now is to.
Absolutely.
Looking for a motion pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 111.70 to approve the 20, 2022, '23 Franklin Education Association Wage Agreement that provides a 0% base wage increase and to approve a 2.7% wage increase pool in supplemental pay.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Is that motion covering C, D, and E?
We will do them all separately.
So we're talking C, right?
We're talking C.
Okay.
Yep, just to add, as a reminder, there are two agreements with our negotiator, staff who can negotiate as a group, one to apply to the rest, so we'll want, again, three separate motions, although our discussion was holistic.
Is this something that we need a, that we need a roll call vote?
I don't believe it is, but I think it's probably appropriate if we do.
I agree with that.
Okay, so Mrs. Wachowski?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Aye.
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item D, 2022, '23 FSOEA Wage Agreement Approval. I'm looking for a motion to approve the 20, 2022, '23 Wage Increase Pool of 2.7% for the FSOEA Employee Group.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All right, let's have a roll call, please.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Aye.
Mrs. Wachowski?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, motion carries. 20, I'm looking for a motion to approve the 2022, '23 Wage Increase Pool of 2.7% for non-represented employees excluding the district administrator.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, further discussion? Dr. Beer, please.
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
Mrs. Wachowski?
Aye.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Aye.
I vote aye. Passes.
Thank you. Academic Standards Adoptions, Dr. Mo and Mr. Blessington, please.
Good evening, I am here for our annual standards adoption. You've seen our standards in the memo that are also linked to our teaching and learning webpage. We've outlined the four K to 12th grade standards for all of our students, as well as the K-12 essential elements for our students with the most significant cognitive disabilities who engage in the DLM towards alternate achievement standards. These benchmark and rigorous standards set high expectations for our students' learning as we work with teachers and admin through the continuous improvement process to develop experiences for students that exceed these standards. Before approval of these standards, can I answer any questions?
Oh, I guess, if, if I were to look at this like five years ago, would I have seen the same thing in Wisconsin? We all, we looked to Wisconsin for most of these standards. I know you just arrived on the scene, but generally, we look to the state for all of our standards.
Yep, yep, and if you, if you look at the background, I think this was in the memo too, like the last time they've been adopted, like, you know, most of them have been adopted in the last like 10 years, a lot of them sooner than that. So for example, the K-12 math standards were last published in 2021. So, you know, we're, we get our lead from the state.
Thank you.
But I think one of the things we've said in the past, and I, I hope we're going to continue that, we get our lead from the state, but, but we try to lead from there. And, and, you know, these are the, these are the state standards that, that we have to do. That's the minimum amount we have to do, but, but we hope to do more than that.
That was my understanding too, if I wasn't sure where that comes through.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I mean, if I'm understanding your question correctly, I would say that, you know, we're, we're working through the curriculum revision process all the time and through professional development, you know, making sense of these standards, unpacking these standards, and then putting them in like a, all of our, excuse me, all of our, our courses, department areas are in a constant review process. And that's ongoing all the time, so that, the, the, the standards are a guide, and then unpacking that, creating course syllabi, creating essential standards are all part of that ongoing process.
Do you think our parents are engaged in any of these standards or aware of them and look at them? And how do, how do parents know what these are all about, other than we have the link?
Do you have any suggestions? I mean, yeah, most, they are on our website, they are linked to in our website. And then most courses that I see my kids taking, they do have standards, either directly citing these or, you know, modeled upon them. So I'm not sure how many people go to the DPI website directly, but the idea that there are course standards, again, as a parent, I.
That's what I was wondering, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. I mean, it's, I mean, we'd rather be more transparent than less transparent about our standards, and it's, it's linked. And I think the level of transparency comes through, you know, the fidelity and, you know, part of our, our role as administrators to make sure that those standards are, are carried out as like, using the standards as a guide, but then our own curriculum revision process, and then building administrators help carry out those goals too.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the adoption of the '22, '23 Annual Academic Standards.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Music Curriculum Review Process Update, Dr. Mo, please.
Thank you. So there was a request made by the board. This is normally something that we would review for all curricular areas in fall. So the request was made by the board to have the information around music early due to some of the changes that were referenced earlier, so that's what I'm going to provide with you, for you today. A nice segue, and that wasn't even planned. So our curriculum review process, we, remember, if you remember, Ms. Sunstrom was here earlier in the year. So given COVID as one challenge, and given the, an ongoing challenge, we have to get substitute teachers to release teachers for long, full days to get this work done, we modified the curriculum review process for this year. So instead of the, the chart, the checkerboard chart of where everybody is, we now envision it as a circle, and it's ongoing. We use some professional development daytime, we use some side meetings. So when we're talking about the music program, we kind of condensed stages one, two, and three. They did some work during COVID, it stalled, we couldn't get subs, so we kind of picked up and dedicated some resources to doing what we call a mini-review for the music program, given the challenges that we were having with numbers. So it falls somewhere between stages one, two, and three. They'll start implementation of some action steps next year in stage three. So we kind of condensed the one and two, one had been started, we finished, moved to two, and we'll be moving to three, just so you have the frame of reference. The steps taken during this past year with the music teachers, so we pulled together all the K-12 music teachers, that would include general music, band, orchestra, choir. It was led by myself. general music, band, orchestra, choir. It was led by myself, Ms. Mowbray from Southwood Glen, and Dr. Cohen. So Dr. Cohen came back and led, because some of that had been started before I started. He took the team through the data review pieces and worked with us for the entire year and kind of has handed it off to me from this point forward. So it was the three of us. The first thing the group did was norms and purpose around their work. We did a full data review around the last 10 years enrollments in the various music programs. Additionally, in the COVID blur, there was a survey administered to all parents or all families, excuse me, who had a student in music who then exited music, about why they exited. So we spent a lot of time reviewing that data. We then moved, and we spent a lot of time, if, if, if you can think about it as a music teacher, what would our ideal and envisioned state be for music? So kind of back up and stay, if you could build your perfect music program in FPS, what would you vision it to be? Then we engaged in doing some plus deltas and root cause work around our current state. So we're not at our envisioned state. Here's our current state. From there, you, we took that whole K-12 team, broke it apart into elementary, middle, and high school. Mr. Cohen did, or Dr. Cohen did high school. I did middle school. Ms. Mowbray did elementary school, meeting with those teams in smaller groups a little bit more frequently. It's hard to get the whole group together and to span K through 12. So we broke it apart. So from that current state, what are the most logical action steps per level that are going to move us to that ideal state? So here's where we are with current state. What do we think as a group, or what do the teachers think would move us to ideal state? So we did that separately with levels, came together the last PD day of the year, and found themes that came up separately from those three levels to create kind of K-12 action steps. So that's a real short synopsis of what we went through, but just so you have frame of reference. That may or may not look a little different from how K-12 social studies is in a review right now. So you will see that given some of the challenges and some of the feedback, going this deep into root cause work may not be something you see with all curriculum areas, just to preview that for fall. We spent a lot of time root causing data here, where with K-12 social studies, that may not be where they spend some of their time, just to kind of foreshadow. This may look different when you see it for other groups in the fall. Just an example of, this was the purpose that we developed and our norms. So you have a frame of reference. I just cut this right from our notes. And that group thought that they wanted to leverage the collective expertise of that group so that this, what we call ourselves a mini-review team, would identify the current state. So where are we at with our various musics? What factors contributed to that current state? So that's the root cause work. How did we get where we are? And make recommendations to foster improvement to move us to that ideal state. So we worked to develop this. I just trying to give you a glimpse into how it works. These are our team norms. This is just from one of our notes documents. So when all was said and done, all this collective work, the group came up with three main buckets of where elementary, middle, and high school came up with common themes for where we should focus our actions to get this program to envisioned state. So there was lots of big lists. We distilled it down into these three areas to start next year. One would be, and I'll go into detail about each one of these areas. So professional development, collaboration time, career and course pathways for music, and what, for lack of a better term, a performance exposure plan with focus on transition grades. Just so you know, for transition grades, one would be fifth to sixth, right, moving from elementary to middle school. One would be sixth to seventh. So state law requires music up through sixth grade. It no longer requires it in seventh grade. So we see a drop off. And then again, from eighth to ninth. So the group, when I use that term transition grades, that's where we see our numbers drop off, especially from sixth to seventh. So to when music is required, to when music is no longer required, it about halves. And that's been consistent even pre-COVID. So when I say transition grades, that's where we need to do some work, because those are the grades we see drop off. So professional development. So I'm going to go through each one of these. Here's kind of the things we talked about that the teachers thought were important to be action steps for next year. So given that our elementary teachers teach general music at the elementary and then band, orchestra, and choir share six, 12, it's hard for them to get together as a K-12 group, elementary. And secondary schools start at different times. So they wanted a time where that K-12 team could meet consistently to do some of this work. I don't know if you're aware or not, this might be getting into the weeds, but every teacher in our district has 16 hours of professional development time outside of the school day that they plan for. Sometimes that's dictated by training. Sometimes that's dictated by curriculum work. We have said that we will repurpose all of that time and give it back to the K-12 team to use. So teachers are paid for that. K-12 music to use for getting together as a K-12 team when they say, see fit. So instead of the district dictating that, they can take that and use that to solve this problem. If elementary start at nine and high school starts at 7:30 and everybody, we, we just couldn't figure that out. The other thing is making schedule adjustments where possible. So we do have a, a music coordinator, Lindy Reinders at the elementary level, but she had a very full schedule. And the general music teachers at elementary got together where how can they repurpose who travels where to give her some built-in time to do the coordination work during the school day. So she is compensated for that, but it's not nearly enough time for the work it's going to take to put some of these in action. It's not much. As sections move around, that schedule, that beautiful thing that we built could change. I'll just preface that. But I was proud that that group said, we need to figure out a way to take one for the team, so to speak, to free up Lindy, who they, Ms. Reinders, to do some of this work. So that was the schedule change. The other thing they wanted at elementary is more relationship building. So that if I am the music teacher at Pleasant View, I get to stay there and get to know the kids and be with them K through five. They felt like that relationship is how they leverage higher numbers into the ensemble programs in middle school. The other thing they requested is context, content-specific professional development. So I'm going to misspeak, but there's certain ways of teaching music and certain ways to teach instruments that's very music-specific, that they wanted to use some of our district professional development days to bring in vendors or attend webinars or do things that were just specifically for music. That would be by their request. The third thing is, as some of you know, we moved to a co-teaching model for music with having more than one teacher in the classroom. It was shared that they felt like they did not have the professional development or guidance from the district on how to best do that, or what are the formats for co-teaching. So we agreed that addition to these outside vendors, we would use some professional development time to talk about co-teaching and how is it best and most successfully done. So that will happen this coming year. The next area we talked about is the creation of a career or course pathway for music. That's something that happens at the high school, but builds from K up onto the high school. So you kind of start backwards to work forwards. We would start with what do we want to create at the high school? So it would be creation of a music capstone course. We also talked about creation of a theater pathway. So how do we build on what we have with that Saber Center to have things like digital light and sound and productions and use that for students who maybe are interested in music as a career but don't want to be a music teacher? So what are the offset pieces that you can do with music? We are in the process of building an educator pathway at the high school. So music has said they would like to work with the educator pathway group to kind of add music teacher or art and music therapy or considerations for the teaching side of music, for lack of a better term. So you kind of have the production side of music and the teaching side of music. They wanted to join in that educator pathway work to add music as a specific piece of that. There's other people, we're doing some coaching, how do you become referees and coaches? So there's other parts of building on educator pathway, but they wanted to be at the table for that. They also went on and on, and we're very excited about this idea of having a recording label of sorts at the Saber Center. So almost like we do Saber Roar in production. As a part of that theater pathway, could it be more of a, a job and community-based work to have a recording label? A little bit different than a theater pathway, but related. The other thing that's happened is there was a request that was made. So right now, students at the middle school generally only take one ensemble music, which when I say ensemble, that would be band, orchestra, or choir. Changing our procedures for how students can take multiple ensembles at one time. It used to be that being identified as musically gifted was a gatekeeper to that. I've heard, again, being new, different ways that's been explained to me. We basically said, you don't need any sort of gifted label. If parents are made aware, one, that this may impact their ability to take other classes that the student won. I mean, there's only so many hours in the day. And two, that they would be responsible for the performances and the instrument rental for both, that, that we would allow that, and making sure parents were aware of those two things. So we had numbers of kids that each of the general music teachers, so they generated interest. The general music teachers were asked to reach out to those families, make sure they were told in writing, like, you have to be at the performances and you have to pay for the instruments, and it might mean you can't take French. And, and you have to be okay with that. So they don't come back and, and say. So I do not know where the numbers are at. We had about 50 kids that said they were interested. Now, this is a fifth grader telling their teacher, yes, I want to take that, which might be different than the follow-up conversation with the parent on does that actually happen. So I don't have the second half of those numbers, but we did gather the interest. Third thing we talked about is what we call the performance exposure plan. So a big thing that came through when everybody said, what is the, and we asked the question, what is a time when a performance or a musical experience most moved you? And everybody shared these, like hearing opera in Italy, or going and see Lion King on Broadway, or shared these experiences with how music moved them to a collective good, to not being scared to perform, you know, this affective side of performance. So they really wanted a way to show live performances to students. How do we expose them to what's going on at the Saber Center? How do we even bring recorded performances in? So that's one side of it is exposing existing students. The other side of it would be how do we showcase our band, orchestra, choir at district events? So having choir come and sing the National Anthem at New Teacher Week. I'm just making, what are all the times where we have people in the district and board members and community events, when we can invite band, orchestra, or choir in to sing or perform, or even if it's a breakfast or a dinner, could they just be playing violin on the side? So how do we make sure that people in the community and people within the district are seeing our kids? So when we say performance exposure, it's both ways, if that makes sense. We've discussed a lot of different things about collaboration with the Saber Center. The teachers will have to work that out during that time. That's why we gave them that collaboration time. So that is, in a nutshell, you've asked specifically about that process. I hope that answers the work that we did and where we intend to go next year, and I'd be happy to take questions.
Why didn't we get this layout in our packet?
I don't have a report. I only have this presentation. I could provide you the slides if you want. There's, there was nothing to report or vote on, just an update. So I did not prepare a report. I only prepared a presentation. I'm happy to give you these slides if you want to go back and review them.
That'd be great. Yeah. Thanks for providing us this update. I know it was outside of the normal cadence, but it was good to hear. I'm glad to hear that there is sort of a specified ideal state for the music department. I would be, I would push you a little further to even say, what would sort of stable numbers be? Like actually put a number to it so that we can know if we're, if we're getting there. I don't know if that's possible, but always use it to measure success if you're specific.
What is an ideal state? Is it the number of students?
Ideal state, we did not talk about numbers at all. We talked about, from the, from our perspective as a team, if we have music program that is everything we want it to be, our numbers would increase. So a little bit nuanced to that. It's not so much gaining numbers, but they really felt strongly like students were leaving music, one, because of lack of opportunities for live performances. So that came up a lot. You know, so talking about this root cause, that's how that action step came. So if we better create this ideal state where students can have access to see things at the Saber Center and see that more students will join music, we'd had zero discussions at any point in time about numbers, except when we reviewed the data. So the, the trend data for enrollment, and that's where those transition grades came, that huge drop off between sixth and seventh grade. So we talked numbers about where do we need to focus our time? The teachers said, maybe we can start doing the equivalent of state interviews, like for the kids we have, why do they stay? How do we focus on that group? So we talked numbers for when do they, I'm sorry, the drop off, but when do we see a big decrease? Sixth to seventh grade is the largest.
So, so this sounds like it's a, a work in progress. Because you, you have an idea of what the ideal state is, but there's been no testing of it to see if your thoughts are what are going to make it happen.
I would say ideal state for this purpose is how we pick the right action steps, not as a goal. Ideal state was what do we want music? The question was, what do we want the K-12 music program in Franklin Public Schools to be? Answer that, and everybody shared.
I'd love to see that answer, because.
That was what we had for our purpose. So taking all of our support, foster musical growth, and I can give you the notes. They talked about all sorts of different things. We want kids to appreciate music. We want, we want the public to know that's part of the performance ensemble, that participating in ensemble music might actually make you a better engineer. How do we get that word out? So people, they talked about all those things.
But I'm a little concerned that that purpose is just not measurable, right? There's going to be no way for you to say whether these interventions you've outlined in your strategy are, are working, right?
It's, it's not a, so it's a curriculum review, remember. This is, so I would push back on the same, if social studies, how do we know social studies is working?
Well, what would you, what would you say?
Right? We don't have a social studies test. We would look at enrollment and AP courses. We would look at.
So you would look at numbers?
We would, but is our music program about getting numbers back? Or is our music program about having a robust K-12? Right? It's, it's both things. If we want to talk numbers, we say, what, we get two more kids a year? Is that moving us to our, and I'm just making that up, two more kids a year? Is that getting us to our ideal state that everybody gets, who participates in music gets a robust experience? Maybe. And I can go back to them and say, our goal is to grow, get 18 more kids a year. I mean, we could set that as a measure of progress. We could also set that we have a music capstone, or we have a, these things that, and, and maybe I'm not seeing where you're coming from, but this is what the teachers believed would grow, putting these things in place would cause more growth.
So growth.
Yes.
You keep saying the word growth, and you keep talking about growth. And so I think that implies not only personal growth for the individual students involved, but the program growing so that we're not having to decrease our staffing.
That's fair. That's fair.
In your report, you talked a lot about, you kept saying things like next year. Are these all things that are happening in this school year, starting in August, or is?
This, so the, the professional development, done is already happening. There's some details about those other two that the teachers will have to work out during that professional development time. So they are working on developing the capstone course, right? That there's teachers who want to lead that work at the high school. So they will use some of that repurposed professional development time to do that. So done, no, but starting, yes.
Right. Just a couple times you were talking about like next year, and I just wasn't sure.
Yes.
With school years, it's sometimes hard to know.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Starting in September or not until?
Mark Suda has a question that I have.
I think I, I don't have this question. I have a statement is that I think, Dr. Mo, you know, we definitely, all of us, I think, had concerns about the music program. And I see that the district has taken genuine steps, you know, to find out what was the issue, the background behind that, you know, and what are the recommendations. And I'm hoping that, you know, I don't see that increasing the numbers is important. I think we want to provide this opportunity to the students, whether they want to be listened, whether they're heard, you know, and whatever they want, you know. And then number is not important. I said about the interest, you know, how many people, if they're interested, you know, I think we must support in any way we form. So I think, you know, thank you for what you are doing. And we definitely like to kind of, you know, see, you know, the results of the work which you have done, hopefully, down the road as such.
I mean, I think numbers are important, because you can't have a program without numbers. So, and clearly, we saw this year that, you know, a drop in numbers based on decisions that the district made caused a, a lack of, or, you know, a decrease in staffing. So I think the numbers, we can talk about growth, and these are all great things. And I'm, you know, I'm 100% on board with all these things. But yes, the, the numbers in the program, we learned this year, really do matter quite a bit. And hopefully, this much, like, care and attention putting into the music department is, won't be like, you know, I'm losing my word, counteract, like, we aren't going to make other decisions as a district that would lead to decreasing numbers again. For example, hopefully, we won't have another pandemic. But if we did have a pandemic, we would be strategic in how we could continue to offer music without having to let kids spend a year without having their music classes.
I guess I would say, so do we think that we, you know, we're missing students that could have benefited? You know, they, we missed students in this, in this dropping of numbers? I mean, students kind of drive. I mean, students kind of drive.
I guess ultimately the question is, our numbers are lower than comparable districts. So my question is, is there something fundamentally different about students in Franklin? That they have less of an interest? Or is it?
I, I would say that through this process. So I thought that same thing, and we did some checking. I've had two inquiries from districts other than ours. I heard you're doing a root calls around Music. We've seen a drop in numbers. What are you guys doing? What have you figured out? So that's anecdotal. I'm, I'm not, but people who have reached out, like, we're trying to figure out this issue. We've seen a change in what our numbers, two different districts. I'm not, but, so I, I stepped back from what I originally thought that it was a specifically, I did the same thing, well, let's look at other numbers. What are other districts doing? And I kind of loosely subscribed to that same thing. And I got two separate inquiries from surrounding districts, both in the suburbs of Milwaukee, that are experiencing similar challenges with, um, Music enrollments looking different than they had in the past and trying to figure out why that is. They also were having a similar with art. So the one district I spoke to, it was Music and Arts more globally. We've just talked about ours in, as Music, just to be fair. They were seeing a drop in Music and elective art classes.
It'd be good to share the, the findings, and it's good that you have some people to talk to.
The, um, so should we expect, um, should we expect a capstone course offering for, um, for the 23, 24 school year, for instance, or?
I would say likely that's two years off, because remember, we'd have to bring that to the board in November for the following year.
I'm asking where, I'm asking what?
Correct.
What the?
Perfect world, it would be two years from now. Yeah, but they will not be ready to bring it to the, to you guys this coming November.
So this is going to be an ongoing process that we're going to continue to ask about. But, but, but it's, um, but it's certainly something that we're working toward. And also, um, one thing that I heard in, in your report was, um, you talked about the co-teaching model and that they didn't really understand what it was. And, and this was before I was on the board, but, um, but Music changed significantly, um, three or four years ago.
When our kids went from fifth to sixth.
And, um, and I, I know, I realize it was when, when we were building a new middle school and, and there was going to be a, a grade change and, and whatever. But, um, but a lot of the information around that was, um, that the, that the educators collaborated and decided that a co-teaching model was the best model. And now we're hearing that they don't really know what a co-teaching model is. And I think it's a, um, there's nobody at this table that, that worked on that, so I'm not castigating anybody. What I'm saying is going forward, um, that's, that's a difficult thing to hear, um, to say, they, this is what they decided, and then have them come back four years later and say, we don't, we don't know what this is.
I, I wouldn't quite be fair. I'm not sure they said that. They said that they felt like they were not provided support by the district on, on how you could best utilize co-teaching. And I wouldn't go to far say they, and they haven't, I don't feel like they've come out. They, when I'm talking about the teachers, have come out against it, but they have said that we moved to this, but we didn't have support in how to do it. That's what it was explained to me.
So, you know, I don't know what the, yeah, I, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus. I'm not, I'm just.
Nobody here would be under that bus.
Well, no, but certainly true, but I'm also, you know, go, I, I like to move forward. And, and that's, you know, when we have these questions, um, when we make these decisions, it's important to know that, um, what happened in the past.
And, and I do think from a curriculum review standpoint, just to be transparent, we will have to consider, is that the best model, right? COVID is not a good time to measure if any model is the best model. So that's not fair. But if we provide people the proper support and then watch our numbers, that will be from, from, we're talking curriculum versus like action plan. That, that would be true for any curricular era. Is that the best way to deliver Music in Franklin? I, I don't, we've never had really a chance to try it, but right now, we don't have evidence that that change was one of the changes we made that, that produced what we thought it would. So, and all fairness to teachers, they're saying, well, we were never trained how to do it properly. Fair enough. I wasn't here. That's a fair ask, as, as far as I say, okay, we'll provide you that, that support in how to do that. I believe that's fair, that they were maybe not provided that.
I think the other question that I hear, um, in the community is, there was a switch to not having instrumental music in the elementary schools, um, at, at that same time. And is that something that's being, that's been done in other similar places? And is it, um, is it an effective, is it an effective way to do things? I realize there, I realize there are different, there are more constraints on time at that level and at every level in schools. But is, is that something that, is that, is that a way to put the genie back in the bottle? Is there a way to put the genie back in the bottle if that's something that's important? And, and to offer instrumental music in fourth and fifth grade? And I, I don't know if the, I don't, I don't know what the answer is.
I would just put as a coda on that. I do wonder, I was thinking about that, whether it is a bit of an equity issue. Are the kids who stick with instrumental music through the end of high school the ones whose parents have them enrolled in lessons outside of school? And I don't know how fair that is.
We, we did see some, and again, it's anecdotal qualitative feedback, but some parents who exited Music said, this doesn't fit in my child's schedule. They're going to do it outside of school. So continue to do piano lessons or sing at church or, or some other way to get that experience, not through school. So again, anecdotal, but there was some themes with parents with means, like I want my kid to take two maths and engineering, so I'm going to have them do piano and choir outside of school. We did see some of that, yes.
That's a good point.
Well, but to your point, Mike, too, you know, we know with any activity, whether it's, you know, soccer or basketball or something like that, or playing an instrument, the sooner you start it, the more solid your foundation is, the more likely you are to continue it. That's why we have, you know, feeder programs for our sport teams. You know, you start football in fourth grade so that by the time you get to high school, you have a really solid high school football team. So yes, if you, you know, theoretically, then the same would hold true for musical instruments. If you started that in fourth grade and fostered that through up until high school, you would have that stronger program at the high school.
We, and we did have a discussion about that, that people use that sports analogy. However, those feeder programs are not school-sponsored. So we went down that, like, how do you, we had the exact, it's funny you bring that up. We went, we talked about that a lot, like, how do you instill that love of Music? Like, you're good at basketball at eighth grade because you've been playing since first grade. What is the equivalent for Music through a school system when those are sponsored by the community? Or, you know, sponsored, the school is not sponsoring youth? I'm sorry, I don't know what the little kids' teams are called. Baby Sabers? Junior Sabers, Baby Sabers, I said, Saber Cubs. But, you know, what is the equivalent of that?
You know, I wonder if this would be, and we'll put, we'll think about this later, but an opportunity to take advantage of the fact that we administer the rec department. I'll stick that in the back of my head and think about that for a while.
We discussed that a little bit, too.
Does anybody have more comment? I really appreciate the, the work put in, and I, um, you know, obviously a work in progress, but, but we appreciate it and, um, and, you know, moving forward is important on this. Does anybody have further comment? All right, thank you, Dr. Moore. National School Board Association Membership Discussion. So, um, uh, it would be, um, it would be time to re-up our membership to the National School Board Association. The WASB, um, has, has cut ties? I won't say cut ties, I, I guess they have. Cut ties, yes. With the National School Board Association. It doesn't appear to me that it is, um, it doesn't appear to me that it's worthwhile, but I don't really matter in that. It doesn't appear to, to administration that I've talked to that it's, that it's worthwhile, or that it's worth the, um, that it's worth the, um, seventy-five-hundred-ish dollars that it costs to join the National School Board Association for the year. I would suggest that, um, I would suggest that certainly for this year, we pause it and, and see where that, um, see where that goes. I don't know how other people feel about it.
Sounds good.
What, I mean, what, is there a headline of like what benefit you do have for being part of it? Or is it just the daily emails we get?
Probably participation in conf, National Conference would be the biggie, hey?
Right, yeah. And Wisconsin, like associates with it too. So being in Wasbe for our Wisconsin Association, we're going to get a lot of that. Yeah, we'll still have our state conference, through the National Conference access, I would say is the biggest piece.
Which I would guess that they would, they would allow us to access if, if we wanted to.
Yeah, we probably just wouldn't get a member rate or something.
Right, yeah, you'd pay more.
Pay the registration.
I'm fine with pausing.
I'm fine with pausing. I mean, it gives you a broader perspective, but education is kind of a local, well, I don't know. It's important to have broad perspective, but there's other ways to get that, so.
Certainly.
Yeah.
All right, great. I'm not sure we need to say anything more about it then. I, I don't think we need to vote.
No.
No.
Policy review schedule, um, Dr. Kahn just walked out for a moment. Please.
So I met with Dr. Kahn before the meeting, actually, so I can, he can add anything if he comes in. But really, it's, um, just reviewing the schedule. We write our own policy within the district and work through that on our administrative team. I work with Dr. Kahn on that, um, to bring back to the board for approval. So, uh, Dr. Mueller was really kind to kind of set us up for this year. We don't have our first, I would say, batch of policies coming through until September. This is really just giving you an idea of what policies you are going to see this year. If there's any you have a specific interest of, let, you know, let myself or Dr. Kahn know. Otherwise, we're going to work through those with the different, um, department heads and bring them to the board on a monthly basis, starting in September.
Thank you.
I guess I would kind of want to know, and you probably don't have this information, but like how many policies we have? And is this adequate to get through them a cer, to a certain time period? I mean, what do we, there's a goal to the cycle, right?
There's definitely a goal to the cycle. I would actually say, uh, working in a variety of other districts, it's very impressive how Dr. Miller has methodically gone through this since she was in the HR position and superintendent role. So she looks at, and you can see it categorized on the top of the schedule, like first of all, age. But then we also, if it's five years old or five to 10, there's some you want to look at every five. Some can go a little longer, but then we also look at when, uh, the Wisconsin Association of School Board is bringing forward recommendations. Those we will always grab onto and, uh, look at what adjustments need to be made. I couldn't tell you the number off the top of our head. I can tell you it's been managed really well, and it's a nice list and looking through it already, that's really adequately measuring what we need to through policy, but allowing us to use the practices we do in the district for the things that that's appropriate for.
Ms. Bennet, sorry to interrupt. We have one hundred and twenty active policies.
Thank you.
And I'm guessing we're kind of getting rid of, I sense that we're getting rid of some of them that are, I know, I know board members, you've seen them for a year now, right? We, we don't always, because the pink ones on here are non-mandatory, right? That are.
We've probably gotten rid of, it seems like we've gotten rid of 10 in the three, three years. I, I would guess we've gotten rid of 10, or, or at least they've.
They've merged them.
They've merged.
There's a cadence set out for us. I feel like it's not too many per meeting to look at, and we're getting through them on a schedule. I think we're doing good. I'm sorry, Ms. Bennet, I interrupted you.
No, that's fine. I was just going to say, when you look at the reason column, there's a few of them that will age out when we go through this year, just because they are included in the student handbook, family handbook, employee handbook. They just don't need to be in policy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right, the treasurer's report is available in Board Docs Library, um, if anybody cares to look at it. School Board Liaison Reports. Does anybody have any Board Liaison Reports?
As I alluded to, I had my first meeting with Mr. Blessington. I'm happy to be the liaison to the curriculum, um, role again this year. We had a good conversation. I'm excited for him to start his work. He's going to definitely be helpful in helping me and then hopefully the entire board grasp more of an understanding on what some of the system specialists and interventionist roles will be, in addition to everything else he has to do. So it was good to get to talk with him, and we'll be meeting on a monthly basis going forward.
I also had my initial meeting with Ms. Cody, um, for Student Services in my liaison, um, role. And similarly, had kind of a good introduction meeting and set up a schedule for future meetings related to when different reports will be coming before the board. So hit me up with any questions you have.
Yeah, hit me up.
My other liaison role is the Franklin Education Foundation. As, uh, Mrs. Yankory, um, kind of remarked about during her community comment, we are kind of in the process of, um, choosing the Excellent Teacher Awards, Excellent Educator Awards, um, for this year. Those will be presented at the August 21st Milkman Game. So if you haven't gotten your tickets yet, you want to come to the Milkman Game on August 21st. It's a good old time, and we'll have the presentation there of all of our educators. It was, like, truly impressive to go through those. I, I haven't done that before. And to read the things that families and students and colleagues are saying about our teachers, really, I mean, I don't, I believe in Franklin schools anyway, but like, just to hear the, like, individual things that are happening in classrooms and the connections being made with students was just really rewarding to be able to do that. And we should be really proud of our district, so.
I, as a policy review, um, board member, I had a meeting with Ms. Bennet today, and we'll begin having, you know, leaving the policies and presenting to the board for the input and recommendations.
I did attend the SWSA meeting, uh, virtually, and Ms. Bennet and Andy also attended. It was the first meeting with the new director, so it was different. You, you don't know how different it was, because.
Yes, it was.
But it was about how to, it was a really, um, the state budget process 101, so. But I was excited to hear that Ms. Bennet, that, um, Ms. Bennet, you have been involved with that more personally in your prior district, so. I mean, you know, I've talked to legislators, and you've done a lot.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, we had a really nice conversation about the legislators that we corresponded with, or I did with other superintendents in that county on a monthly basis. We sat down with them at the table. We tried to discuss and share, um, their decision-making and how that affects schools, what the biannual budget will do for us or not do for us in certain circumstances, and kind of project out or try to understand from them, too, as you saw, a number of bills tried to go through last year that were curriculum-related. A lot of them were vetoed, but we had a lot of conversations to try to build background on that. So, yeah, I'm excited to meet, uh, those legislators that are in our area now, but it was really good experience and, um, good conversations to try to move things forward and build understanding.
So, more, and I'll try and keep us, you know, focused on what's coming through.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
I have set up a meeting with, um, with Ms. Bombian at, um, at Robinwood, which is my liaison school for next week. We do have a lot of new principals, so I suggest, um, uh, you set up something with the, um, with the principal that you're going to be working with this year. I know they're not all in the building at this point, so. Or are on vacations or that sort of thing. But, uh, that's going to be important, um, for us to, um, for us to meet them, as there are a lot of new people. School and Community Engagement Reports. Uh, obviously, we went to the parade.
We had the parade. Good times.
You still ran out of candies, which is.
Double the candy.
I think we, I think we just need to.
You know what? It was really just that last, like, block. And so, you know, like, we got to the fire station. And as a person who used to attend the parade strategically, like, arriving at the last minute, I never expected candy when I was like down by the tennis court, so.
They deserved it?
What?
They didn't expect it?
I don't know, like.
Or their expectations.
Obviously, we want everybody to get candy. I'm not trying to say that you don't deserve it if you're at the end of the, please don't blame me saying that we don't deserve it if you're at the end of the parade. I'm just, I don't think we should beat ourselves up that we ran out of candy.
I think we did quite well. I think we need to do a little better at, um, maybe not passing out to the same people that the person next to you is passing out to, but.
That's true, too. We have to coordinate that.
A lot to learn.
I was wondering if you only give candy to the first 980 of the thousand meters? And that's it. That's it. Ninety-eight percent, that's what we're trying for.
I thought we should just reverse the parade. That way, the same people don't get short change every year.
Maybe we just say we don't have any candy for the first, till we get to the, till we get to the.
We had candy last year. Beginning of this year, we're not starting till.
People do go to the same place.
There was a, um, Debbie's not here, and I, I mean, she is our community relations person, but I was still on this email. There was, um, an email that came out from the parade directors talking about their schedule for next year. So if anybody has any feedback about that, I'd be happy to take that on behalf of Debbie and share that. But because the Fourth of July, I want to say is a Tuesday next year, there, there's some discussion about having the Franklin Festival, um, like that weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and having the parade on Sunday, which would be like the second,
instead of trying to have the festival over the actual Fourth of July, which would be the middle of the week and the parade there and things. So I don't know if that would, if that would impact our candy distribution to have it on a Sunday. But that, that's a pretty major shift. In the 15 years I've lived here, that's never happened before that I can remember, so.
Wow.
It's a pretty significant thing, so I don't know if anybody has any.
You would allow our kids to double up on candy, though, because we could attend a July Fourth Parade in some other community.
Well, and that actually was one of the things that was mentioned in this email, was that there might be more engagement in the parade by businesses and, like, representatives and celebrities and things like that, because, you know, everybody is, has somewhere to be on the Fourth. If we were the community that had it on the Second, we might get more of those, you know, different names, different groups. So if you, if you ponder that, and let us know.
I also attended the Vietnam, the Vietnam Memorial, as I'm sure a lot of people did. It was quite moving. And I, I wanted to, I wanted to thank Casey Stumble and, and his staff at the high school, because they, they remarked that the, the leaders, excuse me, remarked at how great a job they did, so.
That's nice.
So please pass that along to them, but it was, it was, it was quite an experience.
Yep.
All right, anybody else? School Board Member Comments. Okay, Future Agenda Items. Franklin Business Consortium Presentation. We're hoping that they'll, we're hoping that they'll come next meeting. Summer School Report. Coherence Plan Update. Seclusion and Restraint Report. Countrydale School Presentation, so obviously, we're into the school year now. And Review of 22, 23 District Coherence Plan Goals, District Administrator Draft Goals.
What's the nature of the consortium presentation?
So they've, it, it'll be a lot of talking about how how, how the internship opportunities have come about, and how much.
Did we invite them, or they?
They've asked if they could, they've asked if they could present, so I'm, yes, I'm going to invite them. All right, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, moved.
Second.
Our motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:53. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.